Good afternoon, everyone, and it is my hope that everyone had a restful spring break. We will now call the April tenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting to order. Mr. Gaither, would you please call the roll?
Representing Educational District One, Ms. Katie Howard.
Present.
Representing Educational District Two and Board Vice Chair, Ms. Reda Balden.
Present.
Representing Educational District Three, Ms. Michelle Lempiades.
Present.
Representing Educational District Four, Ms. Jennifer McDonald.
Present.
Representing Educational District Five, Ms. Erica Mitchell.
Present.
Representing Educational District Six and Board Chair, Ms. Esha Collins.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large Seat Seven, Ms. Tamara Jones.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large Seat Eight, Ms. Cynthia Briscoe Brown.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large Seat Nine, Ms. Jessica Johnson.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Great, great, thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the meetings of the March sixth, twenty twenty-three board meeting. So moved, okay. It has been properly moved by Cynthia Briscoe Brown. Do I have a second? Thanks, been properly seconded by Jennifer McDonald. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the April tenth, twenty twenty-three board meeting agenda?
So moved, second.
Been properly moved by Cynthia Briscoe Brown, seconded by Reda Balden. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Herring, we will now, will you please bring today's work session items?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three presentations today. Let me go ahead and acknowledge my voice is a little bit hoarse. I feel well, let's keep it moving. First, we will hear a charter and partner schools update from Matt Underwood, Executive Director of the Office of Charter and Partner Schools. Following this, you will receive a monthly financial report from Lisa Bracken, Chief Financial Officer. And finally today, we will focus on our ninth Monthly Student Outcomes Focused Governance, or SOF-G, discussion. Today's progress monitoring report is on Goal Three. Goal Three is post-graduation preparedness, and it focuses on identifying the percentage of high school students who graduate prepared for their next step as demonstrated on a multi-dimensional assessment that can be progress monitored, which is called the Profile of a Graduate. Goal Three states, "The percentage of high school students who graduate prepared for their next step as demonstrated on a multi-dimensional assessment based on the profile of a graduate will increase from seventy-two percent in May twenty twenty-two to Y percent in May twenty twenty-six." For our first presentation, we are ready for Mr. Underwood. Will you please, would you please update us on your presentation regarding charter and partner schools?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Superintendent Herring, Chairwoman Collins, and other members of the Board of Education. My name is Matt Underwood, and I serve APS and the public as Executive Director of the District's Office of Charter and Partner Schools. I want to thank you for this opportunity to provide you with an update about the District's Charter and Partner Schools, as well as to give you some background about the work of our office, including how we use our new performance monitoring frameworks to respond to schools' performance relative to their contracts with the district. Here you'll see some examples, oh, excuse me, up ahead here. Our team in the Office of Charter and Partner Schools works with all twenty-four of the District's Charter and Partner Schools. First and foremost, our main responsibility is to ensure that schools are complying with their requirements and performance goals in their contracts with the district. Additionally, our office provides support to charter and partner schools to help them in better serving their students. Finally, our team works to find ways to foster collaboration between charter and partner schools and district-run schools. You can learn much more about the work of our office, as well as find a whole host of resources about APS Charter and Partner Schools on our website, where you'll see some of the same faces from our team that you'll see here in the audience today. And just want to thank the Office of Charter and Partner Schools staff for being here this afternoon. All right, here on this slide, you'll see some examples of the oversight, support, and collaboration that we provide. In terms of oversight, I'll highlight one example here, and that's our Annual Performance Monitoring Report. I'll be sharing a summary of the most recent annual report later in this presentation, and the complete detailed report can be found on our Office of Charter and Partner Schools website. We also support charter and partner schools. Somebody's taken over the clicker here, apparently. Apologize for that. We also support charter and partner schools in a number of different ways, such as through the Buyback Services Program, developed by our team member, Da'han Hayes. It allows schools to benefit from the district scale by purchasing services from APS departments like transportation, security, or IT support at a lower cost than they might otherwise find on their own. In terms of collaboration, I'm excited to share that we are partnering with the Office of Improvement, Innovation, and Redesign to establish an innovation work group consisting of leaders from district-run charter and partner schools to develop more formalized structures to foster meaningful collaboration between schools. One early idea is the creation of an innovation mini-grant program to support district-run and charter partner schools working together on the dissemination of innovative practices that benefit students. All right, here on this slide, you'll see the current demographic profile of charter and partner schools in the aggregate. On average, charter and partner schools reflect the demographics of the district as a whole. I do want to note here that nearly all of our APS charter schools take advantage of a weighted student admissions lottery provision in Georgia law that increases the likelihood of admission of students who qualify as economically disadvantaged to the charter school through those schools' random admissions lotteries. And I'll dive more deeply into more specific data about and information about our schools, beginning with APS charter schools. ...financial performance. But when I started in my role with the district in the twenty nineteen-twenty school year, we began to work as a team to expand the scope of our reporting and monitoring to also include information on school climate, operations, and governance based on clear indicators and measures. We momentarily paused this effort in order to assist schools with navigating the pandemic, but finalized and implemented a new performance monitoring framework for charter schools in the twenty twenty-one-twenty-two school year. You can see here an overview of the performance domains and indicators under each domain. The full and complete twenty-one-twenty-two school year annual report is posted on our Office of Charter and Partner Schools website. The report includes a profile of each school and the performance on each indicator, as well as a detailed description of what is measured by each indicator. What you'll see here is this high-level summary of each school's performance pulled from that report. Many charter schools met the standards in all performance domains. There were several charter schools that did not meet standards on one of the academic performance indicators, and each of these was because the school's twenty twenty-two CCRPI data landed the school on one of the state's support or improvement lists. Additionally, as you see, a few charter schools were approaching standards on an operational indicator, which means that although there was an issue or concern in a particular area, the school took corrective action to remediate. The implementation of this new performance framework also clearly outlines potential consequences or interventions for any school whose performance does not meet standards. Charter schools receive a high degree of autonomy in exchange for accountability in meeting performance standards outlined in their contracts. So generally, a school who does not meet performance standards in an area in one year will be required to develop a corrective action plan and/or be subjected to intervention by the district. For example, all of the schools on the state's support and improvement list for twenty twenty-two have created school improvement plans that are being monitored by the district and the state. If a school fails to meet annual performance standards more than once during their contract term, it is possible that the school could be placed on probation with clear and defined goals needing to be met in order to be removed from probation or otherwise face possible termination or non-renewal of their contract. You'll see that progression on the slide here from left to right. I'll note that because charter contracts involve not just APS and the charter school, but also the Georgia Department of Education, probationary periods or termination of a charter contract must also be approved by the state Department of Education. So Slides eleven through thirteen show the overall proficiency rates of each charter school on the twenty twenty-two Georgia Milestones assessments as compared to twenty nineteen. Slide eleven features elementary grade levels. Slide twelve, which I'll clip you in a moment, shows middle school grades. And Slide thirteen, high school. The top of the chart on each slide shows the average district milestones proficiency for these same areas and years. As was the case for the district overall, many charter schools saw a decrease in proficiency rates on the twenty twenty-two Georgia Milestones, the first full administration of these assessments since the start of the COVID pandemic. I'll note that some schools, Atlanta Classical Academy, Atlanta Neighborhood Charter School, Drew Charter School, and Westside Atlanta Charter School, for example, saw little to no change in their proficiency rates, or even an increase, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two. Of course, proficiency rates are just one way of looking at academic performance, and with the eventual return of student growth percentages and the full complement of CCRPI indicators, we'll have a more complete picture of the academic performance of each charter school relative to their contract at the end of this school. Again, this slide shows elementary. Slide twelve, proficiency rates from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two in the middle school grades for each charter school. And Slide thirteen, at the high school level. On this slide, there's a summary of the high school cohort graduation rates for each APS high school for twenty twenty-two. Our expectation is that charter high schools will achieve a rate higher than the district average, and you can see that the three charter schools that serve high school grades, Atlanta Classical Academy, Drew Charter School, and Kip Atlanta Collegiate, all posted graduation rates in twenty twenty-two well above the district average. So through the next couple of slides, I'll share some information and data related to Apply APS Charter, which is a central new student admissions application platform that most of our APS charter schools have opted to participate in. This platform was created by our team a few years ago in collaboration with district charter schools to bring more transparency, efficiency, and equity to the charter school admissions process. You can learn a lot more about the platform at applyapscharter.org. The graph here highlights the total number of applications submitted each year during the open application period since twenty twenty, which was the first year that Apply APS Charter was launched. For this year, over forty-two hundred new student applications were submitted to participating APS charter schools, which includes all APS charter schools with the exception of Drew and Kip, who do not as of yet participate in Apply APS Charter. This slide shares a little bit more detail about those forty-two hundred applications. Applications were submitted from all across the district, with the highest number of applications received from households with addresses and zip codes three oh three one eight, three oh three one oh, and three oh three one five, each displayed here on a map of the district. Because most schools and grade levels received more applications than spaces available on the date of the common admissions lottery in early March, that meant that for every one application that resulted in admissions offered to one of the participating charter schools, another five applications were placed on school waitlists. Additionally, as applications can be submitted throughout the spring, summer, and fall, we can expect that these waitlists will likely grow in cycles. Shifting gears here to note that state law requires that each local school district adopt policies and processes for applicants to submit new startup charter school applications for review. Our team facilitates this process for Atlanta Public Schools, and this year, we received one application from Tapestry Public Charter School, which seeks to open a new charter school in APS for the twenty twenty-four-twenty-five school year. The proposed school is modeled after Tapestry's existing charter school that they operate in DeKalb County Public Schools that serves an intentionally neurodiverse student population in grades six through twelve. A review of Tapestry's application is in its early stages, and information will be presented to the board no earlier than the June twenty twenty-three board meeting in accordance with state. One final slide in this section about charter schools. The focus is here on the State Charter Schools Commission of Georgia. Though the commission is a separate entity from APS, the State Charter Schools Commission of Georgia is also able to approve new charter schools that have either been denied by a local school district or that have a statewide attendance zone. Based on data received from the state commission as of October twenty twenty-two, there were a little over eleven hundred students who were zoned for Atlanta Public Schools, but instead chose to enroll at a commission-approved charter school. As well, there are five new commission-approved charter schools near and near APS boundaries that are set to open next school year, so it's possible that the number of APS students who choose to attend a state charter school could grow in the coming months. All right, I'll turn our attention now to the district's partner schools. Partner schools are previously district-run neighborhood schools whose CCRPI performance led the district to select turnaround partners to operate the school. And the appendix contains a summary of the ways in which partner schools differ from charter schools. There are currently five partner schools in operation in Atlanta Public Schools. Slater Elementary School, Price Middle School, and Carver Steam Academy are operated by Purpose Built Schools Atlanta. Gideon's Elementary School is operated by the Kandesi Schools, and Woodson Park Academy is operated by Kip Metro Atlanta Schools. Additionally, Thomasville Heights Elementary School, which is temporarily closed, was a partner, another partner school operated by Purpose Built Schools Atlanta. On this slide, you'll see, similar to the charter schools, the grade levels served and current enrollment for each of our APS partner schools. Each partner school serves all students in the district-defined attended zone for the school and may accept additional students through the district's transfer process if the school has capacity to do so. As with the charter schools, our team developed a new performance framework for partner schools to use starting last school year, twenty-one-twenty-two. Although there are some similarities between the two frameworks, there are some key differences, specifically in the academic and governance domains, that reflect the unique goals and requirements of partner agreements. Here on Slide twenty-four, you'll find a high-level summary of the performance of each partner school that was pulled from that twenty twenty-one-twenty-two charter partner schools annual report that I mentioned earlier. That's also available on our Office of Charter and Partner Schools website. Gideon's Elementary, whose partnership agreement was just renewed at the March Atlanta Board of Education meeting, met all of the performance standards. And Kip's Woodson Park Academy met on all indicators except for one, where some but not all required go-team information had been posted publicly. Purpose Built Schools Atlanta's partner schools met some but not all of the performance standards. Slater Elementary School did not meet its academic performance target on the district's Challenge Index, we'll get into in just a moment. Both Slater Elementary and Carver Steam had multiple vacancies on their go-teams and did not fulfill all go-team meeting requirements. And Purpose Built Schools Atlanta fell just short of our financial framework target for debt-to-asset ratio based on its financial plot. As with charter schools, a partner school's failure to meet standards on elements of our performance framework may result in a range of potential consequences and interventions for the school. For example, given the challenges I noted on the previous slide for a few of our partner schools in meeting all of the governance standards, corrective action steps have been taken this school year that I'm happy to report have resulted in improved performance for all partner schools in the governance domain of the school. Over any consistent failure by a partner school to meet standards in any performance area, including any schools that, at the end of this school year, fail to meet standards in a performance area, may result in a probationary period or termination of the school's partnership agreement. Looking more specifically at academic outcomes, this slide focuses on the performance of partner elementary schools on the APS Challenge Index, which looks at the school's Georgia Milestones performance relative to the school's rate of students from economically disadvantaged households and English learners. More information about the Challenge Index can be found on the district's APS Insights website. Partner schools' academic performance goals are directly tied to this measure. In twenty twenty-two, Gideon's, Thomasville Heights, and Woodson Park Academy were all at or above the Challenge Index targets, except for their school. Indeed, Gideon's and Thomasville Heights have made significant gains on this measure since they first became partner schools. Slater Elementary did not meet its Challenge Index target in twenty twenty-three. This slide shows the same Challenge Index measure but for partner middle schools. Both Price and Woodson Park are meeting their targets for this measure, and Price, which has been a partner school since twenty seventeen, has seen quite a bit of growth on the Challenge Index over this period of time. Here on Slide twenty-eight, you'll see that at the high school level, the academic performance is focused on graduation rate. The goal for Carver Steam Academy as a partner high school is to achieve a cohort high school graduation rate of seventy-five percent by the end of five years of operation by Purpose Built Schools Atlanta. And since Carver transitioned to a partner high school in the twenty eighteen-nineteen school year, that five-year mark will actually be reached at the end of this current school year. However, as you can see here, Carver Steam Academy already exceeded the seventy-five percent graduation rate for the past two years, which is up more than ten percentage points from where the, from the year before Purpose Built Schools Atlanta assumed management of the school. So this concludes the main portion of my presentation. I do want to point out some additional slides in the appendix that includes an overview of the contractual differences between charter and partner schools. A listing of the innovative features for all APS charter schools is defined in their contracts. Charts that show the term lengths for each charter and partner contract, and a comparison of per pupil funding averages across school types. And so at this time, I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Underwood. This is, this is great. I'll start with questions, and I'm going to start on this end. Katie, Michelle, Jen. Okay. Cameron, then Cynthia.
Oh, new microphones. Thank you for the presentation. I guess going back to Slide twenty-seven, and I know you touched on it again in showing that Slater did not meet or had an academic indicator. Could you talk a little more about that and what action we take to monitor progress in addressing that?
Yes, so, yes, so as you can see here on this slide with the Challenge Index, and then go back even a couple further, which gives a summary of the performance report across the domains. So any school, in particular the academic domain, if they're not meeting standards in a given year, if they continue to not meet standards, in this instance Slater, I would expect that the school would either be put on a probationary period or have other interventions put into place following the school year. Those goals that are laid out in the partner agreements are that at the end of a five-year operational period for the partner organization, the school will be at or above the performance target. And with Slater, at the end of their five years, at the end of last school year, not being at that target, at this point, we would expect that they would be there based on the initial contract. So a probationary period would be likely if they were not able to meet that target at this school year based on the milestones results.
So that's...
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
So that's something that we monitor with them. I mean, what are the check-ins on that? And you're saying that they're at the end of that five-year period. So now it's potentially a probationary... What is probationary? This is the week after spring break, pardon me. Probationary period. I guess what are the interim steps to check in on that? Progress to be made from our standpoint, the district's?
Yes, yeah, so for most of these domains who climb in financial, operational, and governance, there's various checkpoints throughout the year. For academics, with the goal being specifically tied to their milestones performance, what we really will look at is their performance at the end of this school year on those milestones to make that determination. The school itself, or the schools themselves, all have their own interim progress monitoring that they do, but our focus on the accountability goal in the contract is specifically on the Challenge Index that's directed from milestones.
Thank you for that additional information. It segues into my second question. Understanding that each charter and partner have separate contracts or for the, the schools they operate, know we're working on getting some potentially interim data. I mean, we have our goals and our guardrails that were formed separate from the contract. We're looking at interim data through MAP assessments, and knowing that some of our charters and partners are using MAP, when might the board get an update as to when we might be getting some of that interim data that can, that parents, families, the public also has that information to the extent it can be provided around the, you know, interim data in addition to knowing we have the milestones data too? And then to tag on to that as well, I know the information is on APS Insights. Is there another place where the data is stored that's easily accessible on charters and partners on the district's website? Sorry, that's kind of a two-part question.
Sure, sure, yeah. Maybe I'll start with the second one and just ask a clarifying question to make sure I understand other data, some of the other performance data for schools? And where it's housed in the district website?
Yeah, if you could, to make sure the public knows where they can easily access data. I know APS Insights has all the schools, but is there a place for the information on charter and partner schools? This information, and then separate from that really is the longer-term conversation about the interim data?
Yeah, so to the second question about performance data, really any sort of data related to charter and partner schools. So yes, the APS Insights website contains information, including charter and partner schools around milestones performance, attendance, excuse me, milestones performance, enrollment, et cetera. So the APS Insights blog is a great resource for all schools. Specific to charter and partner schools, the Office of Charter and Partner Schools website, which is on the district website, has our annual performance reports. We put all of the school's financial audits on that website, and we put all of the school's contracts on that website. So really, in an effort to be as transparent as possible with the information that we have related to charter and partner schools, you can find all that information on our, on our website. And then I'll turn over to Dr. O'Brien and Dr. Smith around the other question.
Hi, good afternoon. So we have established data sharing agreements with all of our charter and partner schools that currently administer the MAP assessment. So right now, where we are in the process is really just working out the logistics with each of our charter and partner schools. So as Mr. Underwood kind of said, we have to work with each individual charter and partner management organization, or school, I should say, to work out a, the actual data sharing process. Other things that we are looking at exploring as well is that when we think about, say, the MAP assessment, each of the charter and partner schools that administer MAP have a different testing window. And so when we think about, say, the fall administration, currently at APS, we administer the fall assessment in August. That may not necessarily be the same time that one of our charter and partners is administering their fall assessment. So really, another piece that we need to really look at is really reaching out to MAP and exploring what does it look like to actually, or is it best practice, really? To combine those two data points together to, you know, again, because we want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
Thank you, that's extremely helpful. It really helps us better understand where we are in that process and the public. Because, and the best practices piece, because, yeah, it's us digging in deeper into what MAP can share for everybody. So, thank you all.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just making sure she was good. Um, so, no, you're fine. So I'm just gonna dovetail on where we are and then back us up a little, if that's okay, if that's fair. So with respect to our partners, I would like for you to correct me if I'm wrong, because I was a parent at the time that partners became part of APS. And if I understood the rationale behind having partner schools, it was because we believed that the state was going to have a takeover plan similar to what they were doing in Louisiana. And we ended up, as a state, not doing that. However, as a school district, we protected ourselves in putting in partners. So my question is, very simply, if that was the rationale, why are we continuing with partners? What's the rationale, good or bad? I mean, we have partners that are doing well. We have partners that are trying to pick themselves up. What's the rationale after five years of why we are not taking back our schools?
If I can give a little context first, because I also was not with the district in this role at the time, but my understanding is in twenty sixteen, there were a number of schools who were potentially, like you mentioned, under threat of potential state takeover. And so the district at the time identified a number of different strategies to help turn around those schools, one of which was establishing these partner schools in twenty sixteen. And so when those contracts were established, the idea was to give a runway and a window of time where performance could be improved for these schools. So I'll give just that kind of additional background and context. For Herring, if you... want to add anything related to that as well.
No, I appreciate that, Matt. So in brevity, in brevity, a couple of things. Um, Board Member Olympiatus, you referenced a five-year, five, five years ago, if you will. Um, Matt referenced the runway, which is the time that we've granted for schools to show performance. We've seen, um, both performance and opportunity for continued growth. Uh, your question was, why have we not? My response simply would be, given the last three years, we weren't in that space to make some immediate decision, not to say that that is or is not something that we would or would not do, but one of the reasons why that has not been immediately lifted has been, quite candidly, the runway that was given to be able to see performance, to see best practice, to see if there was a space for us to take those practices and replicate it. There's always the opportunity to review, there's always the opportunity to determine how do we want to move forward.
Okay, I, I appreciate the response. I'll just be frank, I don't necessarily agree, but I appreciate the response. So, uh, so moving back through that, uh, with respect to where we are with our charters and where we are with the potential of having another, yet another charter, and I'm going to say yet another charter come into this district, let's be really clear with the public, and I wish we would be more clear with the public with where we are. At this point, we have, um, at least nineteen charter schools, some of which, to your point, are connected with, you know, their branding, if you will, but nonetheless, it's nineteen local charter schools out of a state that has fifty-three. So we're, 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 we're almost, I mean, we are almost at half of that with respect to local charter schools. And then on top of that, you may be able to tell me how many state charter schools we have, but within our local district, we have almost, uh, with the upcoming five, we have eighteen. So between the, the nineteen and the eighteen, let's just say, let's just be nice and just call it thirty, or it's, you know, it's a little bit, roughly there, it's a little bit more. Uh, that's a lot of choice, given our public school choices, and we have very small public schools. Um, and to be quite frank, and I'm not, I'm not coming after you, I'm just trying to be frank, but to be quite frank, we fund our charter schools and our partner schools first, and then we figure out how to, how to fund the rest of the school district. And our schools, our traditional schools are on the back end of that funding after we figure out what it is we're doing across the district. So my question is, what do y'all think about that? I mean, what does this administration believe with respect to what, how we're serving children and what is in the best interest of the children that we serve? And I'm not saying that charter schools or partner schools are wrong or right or this or that, but if we're giving them their money upfront, why are we not doing that for our traditional schools upfront? Um, and, and, and we have very low under-enrolled schools, and we're looking to bring in a charter school that believes in under-enrolled schools as part of their portfolio of individualized inclusionary and innovative education, which is what I thought we, as a district, were trying to do for the rest of our schools. So with all that say, with all that said, I'm just trying to say, I, I, I'm just kind of curious as to what we're doing, because we've got a lot going on and nothing, uh, nothing quite seems to be, um, overperforming, uh, with any particular, um, stellar that we need to replicate. And I don't mean that to be disrespectful, I just mean that to be a point with respect to the, the portfolio that we are carrying right now. Uh, and I, I, I'm afraid that's my point, and it's not, um, I'm sorry. I, I, I mean that y'all are always doing good work, but it, it's not, it's not the most complimentary that I've ever been about where the school system is, but I am concerned about where it is that we're going. We have to make a decision about where it is we want to go and what it is that we believe in. We cannot continue down this idea that, uh, this splintered approach is working, because it is not. It is dividing our communities and it is not serving our children.
Thank you for, I'm going to answer that, Matt, or respond to it. So thank you, Board Member Olympiatus, for, uh, stating your position. Um, I heard you mention that we fund our charters first, charter and partners first. I'm not, so without trying to answer that, I know as we go through the funding process, we identify how those dollars are allocated, because we must do that in compliance with, with, with the state. Yes, ma'am. But I'm not as clear about stating that it's first, but I just wanted to state that clarity around how the budget process flows out. Uh, secondly, it is a diverse portfolio. Um, that's what I also heard you name, and even in that diverse portfolio, that is APS's nineteen of those are charter schools. And so here again, um, I just want to acknowledge that we are clearly aware of that, and we do watch the performance of those presentations like today, but the other piece I wanted to add clarity, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, we have not finalized any decisions relative to tapestry. We were naming, identifying that of the five letters of intent, they were one through which they are currently going through that process. Is that not correct?
That's correct, yeah. We're just in the review process right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. So I would imagine, I'm looking at slides twenty-six and twenty-seven, so I would imagine that our charters also have student populations that are certified for free lunch or English language learners, so I was curious, why are the charters not also measured on the performance or the challenge index, and it's just our partner schools?
Yes, no, great question, and if, if it's possible, we'll get the slides back up here, that would be, that would be great. Um, yeah, so the charter contracts, uh, which is a three-party contract between APS, the charter schools, and the state, have a different set of performance accountability requirements, and all of the performance goals for academics for charter schools in the state are tied to CCRPI. Um, so they're focused on CCRPI, academic overall score, their content mastery, and then progress, which is in some ways, in a little bit, to the challenge index. Um, so those goals are in their contracts. I will say, even though the challenge index isn't a part of the accountability framework for charter schools in the contract with the state, the district does do a challenge index measure for charter schools as well, and so that information is on the APS Insights website, so you can see performance relative to that measure there, too.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, gonna pick up on, you know, a couple of the things, what Board Member McDonald was just referring to is part of what gives me pause, and it's, I get it that they all have their different contracts of how they're measured, but it makes it really hard to try to, like, compare across, you know, the entire district, and, you know, you know, families need to know that too, you know, to know how different schools are doing relative to other schools. And I think, you know, Board Member Howard picked on that too, you know, when she was saying, you know, when are we going to start having some, you know, similar data measures so that we can see how we're doing? Because we are investing, you know, these, these, all of these represent significant investments. Um, and so I think trying to be able to, because it sounds like we have the data, we just need to pull it together and present it in a way that we can show comparisons across schools. Um, and I'm hoping that as we get that data sharing and roll out the, the kinds of things that Board Member Howard was talking about, that we will start to be able to see that a little bit more. I'll go back to the, to the budget piece as well, and we hear from community members who feel that some of their schools, the, more the traditional schools, um, when they do lose students, um, they feel a real budget pinch, um, and it, it has a budget impact when, because we've got a lot of under-enrolled schools, traditional schools, and I look at those three ZIP codes where the applications are coming in, and those are also where we have a lot of under-enrolled schools. And we just have to always be mindful that what we do in one area, like, the, the actions of one person affect another person, and so what we do with one school affects another school, and we can't just look at them in isolation, we have to see that kind of complex dynamic play out. Because one of the things that I've looked at, you know, over the years, and I appreciate the fact that they're using a weighted lottery, and I hope that that's going to balance things out a little bit, but when I do look at it, um, I do see that particularly in instances in similar geographic areas, that some of the charter schools, um, do have, you know, lower mobility rates and lower percentages of economic disadvantage in the SOL students compared to their neighboring schools. Um, and it does create a big budget pressure on the, the students that are left at the other schools when you pull out. It just changes the dynamics between the schools in a way that I think is, um, unfortunate in what I hear about, you know, from families that are in the area. I don't know the answer to that, um, but it is there, and I, I think that we need to always pay attention to that when we come to it. And I know I haven't created a question, I don't think, but, um, I will go back to, I was not, also not on the board when this took place, but I was following it, and I did know that it was a rescue of sorts. Um, and then talking to some of my colleagues, I was asking the question of whether it was intended to be permanent with the partner schools, or whether it was intended to be a rescue, that we then talk about what's the, what's the off-ramp? You know, at what point do we off, off-ramp? Um, because it, you know, the partner situation does also have unintended consequences, um, and we see that playing out particularly in the high school over in Carver, um, where we hear from students about some of the friction between, um, it's, it's kind of a perpetual othering, because it's not the same school, you know, they always feel kind of othered. So is there, you know, was it, I know you weren't here either, but, you know, was there, was there ever a thought around what was the, you know, at what point do we say, thank you for your service, you know, and, or, great, you're doing phenomenal, let's see how we can do this in all of our other schools? Or just say, thank you, we, you know, we're no longer under that threat? You know, when, when do we talk about the off-ramp?
I think it's an important question.
I was on the board when we, when we voted on that, and I'll, I'll say, my recollection was, is that, uh, we likened it to bringing in a specialist. Uh, when you, uh, when you have cancer or you have a broken bone, you don't go to your GP, you bring in a specialist who can most quickly and effectively treat that problem. And we had schools that we were, at the time, in danger of losing to the state, and while that legislation didn't pass, we didn't know it wasn't going to. And, uh, we, we needed to act quickly in order to eliminate that risk, and also, more important, to lift up our most challenged schools, our schools who, that were struggling the most. Um, and I, I, my impression was not that it was intended to be permanent. So, uh, I think, and I think there are some, some off-ramps built into the contracts, uh, and, and also obviously at the point at which you have finished your cancer treatment or your bone is healed, you, you don't go to your specialist anymore. So I, I think that analogy holds. Um, I also want to go back and ask, because when I joined the board, our first couple of years, and this is directed at the charter schools, not so much the partner schools, um, it felt like we spent a lot of time writing what, in my lawyer language, I would call cease and desist letters, um, asking specific schools to cease from what is commonly known as cherry picking and lemon dropping, or exceeding, exceeding enrollment caps, or in some cases even issues with curriculum and instruction, uh, that were problematic within the, the mission and vision of Atlanta Public Schools. Um, and all of that is to say that at the time, there did not seem to be any progressive discipline or progressive involvement, stop, go, go, that one.
Turn here.
Um, accountability monitoring and review in place at the time, and so these sorts of issues had to be caught by usually the community and brought to the attention of the board and administration. So my question is, is, is this process relatively new? And how quickly do we move once we detect an issue with one of those, those markers that are on either the previous slide or the next slide? How quickly do we move to go in and say, this is an issue, we need to start instituting what, for want of a better phrase, I'll call progressive discipline?
Yeah, um, great question. So I would say that the, what you see here on the slide about intervention, probation, termination, non-renewal, I would say it's not new, because this is language that's in many ways pulled directly from the charter contracts. Um, however, I will, what I will say is it's new in terms of us really closely tying this performance monitoring framework that we've established as a team to these potential interventions and consequences, and so we want to be really clear and transparent with the public, but also with the schools in fairness to the work that they're trying to do to operate about what those performance standards are and what will happen if you don't meet them. And so with the, um, with the intervention, probation, termination, non-renewal you see here, I think we can move relatively quickly in terms of intervening for a school. So for example, in my first year in this role, we had a school that wasn't meeting standards with a particular area in the financial framework. We sent them a letter of concern, asked them to come up with a corrective action plan, they very quickly corrected the issue and, and have been on track since. But if we have, as I mentioned before, schools that, again, this year are on a state support and improvement list as a charter school, who have a higher, you know, I'd separate them from the partner schools who are specifically selected for turnaround because of their performance, a charter school is given a contract, given this autonomy and flexibility in exchange for higher performance standards, if those schools are on the state's support and improvement list, they are, have grossly, um, underperformed, and so if those schools are, again, on that list, I would expect they would be on a probationary period and would be in jeopardy of not being renewed if they were not off that. So I think we can move, can and should move quickly in intervening when schools are not meeting these requirements.
Thank you.
So I'm just curious, going forward, I know that a number of the charter contracts are coming up, and as, as the board kind of dives deeper into SOFG, I heard you all mention that some of the schools are doing MAPS testing. Do we know, like, what, what number of them are actually using MAPS, and, and is there an opportunity going forward as we're looking at contracts to start asking to incorporate specifically MAPS, and then, of course, our SOFG goals as we're going forward, and to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page and really being partners in this space?
Yeah, so currently, um, nearly all of the charter organizations use the MAP assessment. The Kip Metro Atlanta Schools does not, but of course they represent the, the largest number, they use a different, um, they use a STAR reading and math assessment, which is sort of akin to MAP. Um, I think there, there's certainly opportunities to explore how that data gets used. I, I would, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the charter schools themselves, but knowing that most schools use an assessment like MAP or STAR as a formative assessment not for accountability purposes, and in fact, I believe, N D, N W E A that administers the MAP has cautioned against using it for accountability purposes, having that in a charter contract, I imagine is not something that, um, most of the schools would, would support, you know, in, in the way that we use the milestones, which is a, a state standardized assessment given across all schools, so, um, but certainly worth exploring the, pouring the question further about how that data could be.
Thank you, Matt, for answering that question. I anticipated that, um, given the SOFG reference. I just wanted to add a bit more context to the timeline as well, which is essentially a reminder, whereas our board has, we're going into our ninth month of discussion with SOFG, um, and in support of that, it is, it actually is a timely inquiry around. So then how does that start to look for both our charter and partner schools? That's number one, just given our first year of iteration, but then secondly, relative to MAP, it is also district-wide, our second, second, second year of full completion with the MAP. Thank you for identifying, uh, the number of schools within our charters, charter and partner schools that utilize MAP, STAR otherwise, and the call out relative to utilizing it in the space of accountability. It is simply the right season for the question, given where we are with SOFG. I just wanted to lift the timeline, knowing that at this I just wanted to lift the timeline, knowing that at the same time, we're closing out our first year. So as we go into this next year, those are the right questions for us as administration to think about, how might that look? We are not removed from that, and we certainly hear the board's appetite for that. I just wanted to name the dynamics or the dual dynamics of the question with the timeline of where we are, as well as with our own rollout with the use of MAP, which is why we've maintained, I believe, milestones as a part of our performance indicator. Thank you.
Hello, thank you, quick question. And I believe you mentioned these in different places, but I just wanted to clarify. What percentage of our students are in charter and partner schools?
So as of this year, there's about, about 20% that are enrolled in a charter school, and it's on this slide here, just given the current enrollment numbers, and about 5% that are in a partner school.
And then the next question would be, and then about what percentage of our budget goes to charter and partner schools?
For that, I might turn it over to our chief financial officer in terms of the, about 20%.
That's charter and partner at 20? So charter and partner get 20% of our budget, but they represent 25% of our students? Is that what I heard correctly? Okay, so that would be a, a index under 100?
Yeah, so we typically do include a chart at some point in our budget conversations where we show that. And historically, of course, we're building FY24 right now, but historically, the enrollment has been about the percentage of the budget, so they tend to go the same way. So whatever the share of enrollment is for charter schools, that's the share of budget, whatever the share of partner schools is, is the share of budget for partner schools.
And those children are APS children, correct? Okay, thank you.
Lisa, while we have you here, can you also clarify, just in terms of the funding? I was going to hold the question to the next presentation, but since we're here, can you also clarify how the state law dictates the funding for, for charter schools?
Sure, and we do get the calculations from Matt's office, so he might be able to more specifically talk about what the funding formula is for the state and the, the contracted per pupil allocation that we give to our partner schools.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll skip ahead real quick to the, there's a slide in the appendix that gets at this a little bit.
Appendix, yeah.
If you could look forward faster in this. Anyways, as I'm clicking through, I'll talk and see if I can do these two things at the same time. So the charter funding formula, which is dictated...
Thirty-seven.
Thank you. By the Georgia Charter Schools Act, at a kind of simplified version, charter schools in the state receive funding that is a combination of their QBE earnings, so their state earnings based on the students that they serve, as well as a proportional share of the local revenue of the district. So whatever the, the local property tax revenue of the district is, a proportional share based on the size of the enrollment of that school, in combination with the state QBE earnings, is what the charter schools allotted for funding. Partner schools are funded in a slightly different way per their contracts. It's essentially a direct per pupil based on the, the total district general fund budget. That is how partner schools are, are funded.
Is there any priority based on that funding? Or is truly just the calculation of QBE and the, the local share, the local share and then as far as the enrollment at the school, at, at the actual school?
It's purely a formula that's outlined in law that we plug numbers into and generate the, the calculation for the school.
Thank you. Just, I do have a, a couple of questions, but also just to add to Cynthia's, to add to Cynthia's statement and narrative of understanding, because I think a lot of people in this, the, the room weren't here when we made the decision to the, our turnaround. So the, the partner school piece was part of our overall turnaround plan, and as you remembered, or probably if you were following, it was a tiered approach where schools were. What we understood and identified with Thomasville, Giddens, they were the lowest performing schools in the state, literally the state. And so there was a dialogue that the board had along with administration, knowing that there needed to be something to be done at this, at those schools with a sense of urgency while we had the turnaround, the, well, the opportunity, school OSD from the state on our backs, but also with the revelation that we did not have the capacity in the district to move those schools at the space. So we all knew needed to happen, so it wasn't a response, the, a response to the state law was a portion of it. It was the, the proposal, the state law made it very clear and gave us no, no runway or window for a time or continued delay for at least six of those schools, elementary, middle, and, and high school, that was the lowest in the, in the state. So entering to the partnership, the partnership school piece was premised on building that, building that capacity to really focus on achievement and what those schools actually needed. It wasn't a plan that was meant to be, from our, from our understanding, wasn't meant to be permanent, but we also knew that a couple of years or the failure of that law would have been more reactive than proactive than we needed to be in truly addressing the generational challenges of those schools, which is also why those agreements are between that, it's like, what, that, that 10-year, that 10, that 10-year mark. So this presentation here and the continuous monitoring on our end assures us that it's either tracking or not tracking on what our intentions were when we entered into this, what, seven years, gone on seven years ago. And so I think it's important for us to continue to lean in and ask these questions on what does the exit look like and plan for that versus to say, oh, well, no, it's not working, end, end it, and then move, and then where, you know, where, you know, where are we? So I definitely wanted to, as Cynthia and I were on the board at this time, at that time, wanted to at least give that under, give that understanding of it. So to hear where we're at a five-point, a five-year mark in, in this accountability probationary piece, these accountability measures are in place, does in fact give us the leverage, but also the knowledge of understanding where they are so that if we need to have discussions of what the exit strategy should be, then at least we're knowledgeable on that and not reacting to what we think here, see, or what we interpret on our own to be, and really lean to the knowledge and the expertise that we have here through, in the administration to help us make that, those decisions. So I just wanted to continue to lean, to lean on that. I had two questions, one particularly in terms, and I think a couple of us, we talked about the data sharing piece and understanding, like, how many, exactly how many schools do we, how many of our schools do we have, our charter schools that, I know we have data sharing with all of them, but how many do we actively know are using MAP or we have access, you know, we have access to that data? I know it said that we all do, but how many do we actually have access to that data to now?
Yeah, so all of the charter and partner schools, with the exception of KIP administer the MAP, and all of them, with the exception of Centennial Academy, who administer MAP, have entered into a data sharing agreement for this year, for the sharing.
And so, yeah, I think it is important for us, as we continue to think about like SOFG, how we want to emerge that into our monitoring plan and be very mindful that it's not from accountability, but to really truly understand what are also happening because to Aretha's point and a point that was made, though, they are APS, they, they're APS students as well. And then also just make, want to make the point in terms of where we are with our charters for over, at least over a decade, APS has had the highest number of charter schools in this, the state. And since I've been on the board, we have not opened the doors, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we have not opened the doors to any new charters. But what I can tell you just on the south and west side of this city, Erica probably got calls, Aretha, like, we have, there's been state charters approved throughout. I can list three or four automatically that are in existence now and two that I know. So the reality is, there is an appetite, you know, like, there is an appetite for state-approved charters that are existing somewhere that we need to be mindful of, but I think it's also important for us to, I think it's also important for us to emphasize to communities in regards to our role in that, which if an entity decides to pursue the state charter route, we have no, there is no, I'm not the board member, right? And I get that off, you know, and I, we, we get that often. So I do, I do want to push that there, that I'm seeing more of the growth than I am of the re, of the pause or reversion, but I do want to make it clear in regards to our participation that we have not, you know, we have not opened the doors to any brand-new charter since, you know, since I've been, yeah, since we, since we've been on the board. So one question I do have about slide 13, and just for clarity, it looks like there's a drop, that a significant drop that is happening in the high school space in terms of enrollment, and I want to make sure I'm interpreting that right. So it just under...
Yeah, I think that, and perhaps someone from the data and information group can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the difference you see in terms of the total number of test takers between 2019 and 2022 is more a function of the number of students who are taking those tests because of, in the very small red print up top, some students who no longer have to take certain end-of-force tests.
Got it, okay, I didn't see that.
So it's more just fewer, fewer students taking some of the tests that they previously took in 2019.
And then my next question, looking at the data, it also looks like, when I was looking at the slides, that some of the performance of where schools are, the elementary and middle schools are also kind of trending on what we're seeing traditionally coming out of the pandemic in terms of performance and, and, and some of the largest, you know, like one school, you know, one middle school that was at 22% beginner learner in 2019, at 2019 is now at 42%. I know we're having these same conversations that we're thinking about SOFG, which I think also why that data is important. In these conversations, what are some of the trends that are, well, what are some of the things that are happening? Or, or are we having those cross-conversations on what's working, what's not working, what trends are there seeing, how they're addressing? Are we having those kind of conversations to kind of understand what's working, what's not working, or ways that, to grow?
Yes, yeah, so definitely see some similarities in the, in the performance trends on milestones, which of course, I mean, this is just one data point and certainly a lot of caveats with the 2022 milestones, but yes, facilitating and having conversations across schools. And then I think to the point I was mentioning earlier too, one of the things that we're trying to do, now that we're hopefully kind of in a, in an area where there's an opportunity for more collaboration than there was during the height of the pandemic, finding opportunities that we can more formalize, district-run school leaders, charter and partner school leaders coming together to talk about these very things, because even though the operating models are different, a lot of the challenges are, are the same.
Thank you. And then my last question is slide 24. So I see from the governance and where it shows, like, it says Slater and Carver not meeting on indicator, on the first indicator and approaching on indicator one, and then Price Middle School as approaching. So how, what's the difference between those two schools not meeting and, and, well, not meet or approaching and then Slater approaching?
Yeah, so the, all the details are in that full annual report, so apologies for this very simplified version here, but I can tell you specifically with those, those schools, in terms of Slater and Carver steam, there were multiple vacancies on their go team for last year, which is where they were not meeting. And then the approaching for those schools, as well as for Price Middle School, had to do with some, but not all of the required areas that had to be publicly posted and available related to go teams, were not on their websites over the course of the, over the course of the year at certain check. So, but again, this is all based on 21, 22 school year. For each of these schools, the governance and go team performance has been markedly improved due to some steps the schools have taken, but also that the district's taken to monitor.
Thank you so much. I don't have any more questions, any other thoughts? Okay.
On slide three, could we get follow-up to the entire board on examples of the collaboration? It'd be wonderful to see some, especially around establishing district charter, partner, innovation work group in collaboration with Office of Innovation, Improvement, and Redesign. If we could get some examples of that work being done, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We'll make sure to follow up with that request, for remember, Howard. Thank you, Matt. Ms. Bracken, we're ready for your monthly financial report.
All right, well, while that comes up, good afternoon, Board Chair Collins, members of the board, Dr. Herring. Today I'll be presenting three topics related to finance. The first is an overview of the financials for FY23 for all activities occurring in the months of July through February within the Consolidated General Fund, followed by the recommendation for some budget adjustments. Finally, I'll provide a brief update on the FY24 budget development process. With the next four slides, we will cover the FY23 financials for the first eight months of the fiscal year. The financial position continues to be relatively strong. So far, we've collected about 86.57% of total resources budgeted, with local collections at 99.49%, state at 51.59%, and other, which includes the fund 150 Title I transfer-in at 85.52%. We are currently tracking ahead of pace for revenue collections overall as compared to this point in time last year. Last year by March, we had collected a total of 79.06% of total revenue. This year, we're already at 89.84%. We'll continue to monitor the pace of collections throughout the year and will adjust if needed. And over the next couple of months, we'll likely adjust the use of fund balance down and local revenue up to more accurately reflect the collections. On slide five, we see the budget to actual expenditures so far for FY23. We have currently spent 61.11% of the budgeted allotments and spending in all functions is appropriate for this point in the fiscal year. Slide six represents the current spending trend for FY23 against the 22 trend. By the end of February in FY22, we had spent 60.79% of our total annual spend. This year, we're slightly ahead of pace at 61.11%. Detailed financials can be found in Agenda Item 9.4. I am bringing one budget adjustment for the Consolidated General Fund and one for the special revenue. For the Consolidated General Fund, I'm requesting a decrease to use of fund balance and expenditures in the amount of $3.5 million for the partnership and early learning with the City of Atlanta as the $5 million commitment will actually be, be tiered out over three years. For special revenue, I'm requesting to increase the spend authority for AETC broadcasting by 1.1 million in alignment with actual revenues. Details for these adjustments can be found in Agenda Item 6.1. Agenda Item 9.6 includes the detailed information report for special revenue adjustments. Less than $1 million have occurred in March. Finally, I'll provide a brief update on the FY24 budget planning process. As a reminder, for the March Budget Commission meeting, our Chief of Human Resources, Nicole Lawson, presented and shared out the recommendations from the recent compensation study for teachers only. Some key takeaways from that presentation include that APS teacher salaries currently rank between third and fourth among Metro Atlanta districts, trailing Cobb, Fulton, and Gwinnett. Masters-level teachers' starting rate is more than $2,600 less at APS than in Cobb, and the mid-range pay for more experienced master-level teachers is almost $12,000 lower in APS than in Cobb, ranking APS at the 50th percentile for teacher salaries in Metro Atlanta. This slide reflects the initial proposal for teachers. It factors in the $2,000 increase proposed within the QBE and seeks to close the gap between APS and other competitors. The recommendation moves APS to the second or third position in teacher salaries across Metro Atlanta, depending on where teachers are entering the scale. Our starting salary for master-level teachers would increase by almost $3,000 to nearly $59,000 per year, and more experienced master-level teachers would move to just over $77,000 per year. The recommendation summarized means that the implementation of a new structure that includes the adjustment by the state continues and increases retention stipends and supports innovation and hiring strategies. These recommendations represent a significant cost at over $32 million and do not include the recommendations for non-teaching positions, which will be presented and discussed at the April Budget Commission. Slide 13 present, was presented at the March Budget Commission meeting and has not yet been updated. On March 28th, Senior Cabinet retreated to review the Central Office Program Manager budget requests. We have since started the process of refining those requests and are working with department heads to close the remaining budget gap. At the April Budget Commission, we are prepared to present a balanced budget that heavily emphasizes the need to... that heavily emphasizes the need to fund the compensation strategy. Also at this meeting, we're planning for an in-depth presentation of the non-general fund budgets, and as mentioned, the final shareout of the compensation study recommendations. The meeting is currently scheduled for April seventeenth at twelve fifteen. The public hearing and vote on the tentative budget will be held at the regularly scheduled board meeting on May first, and the final public hearing and vote on the FY twenty-four budget is scheduled for June fifth. That concludes my presentation, I can take any questions you may have at this time.
Great, thank you so much. Any questions, I'll start here. Cynthia, Tamara, Michelle.
Yeah, thank you for this, Lisa. Your presentations are always thorough and coming as someone who's a word person and not a number person, also easy to understand. So, thank you. I would like you to, to do your annual speech on how two thousand dollars per teacher from the state is not actually two thousand dollars per teacher and why, why we have to close that gap. Because I think it's, it's, it's important to repeat that, and there are always people who have questions or don't understand it.
Sure, in two ways. So, the first is when the state increases the state salary schedule, even if it's fully funded, because of the local fair share or the local five mil share, the state withholds five mils worth of funding from that formula. And so it is an expectation that the local district come up with the balance of that. And so we fund, using that same principle, we would fund the gap with local revenue between the local fair share portion that's withheld from the state formula. The second piece is that they only fund certain categories of positions, and there is an expectation that all of our staff will be compensated. When we give raises, we give raises to all of our staff. And so the local revenue must also pick up that difference.
Thank you, that's what I needed.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to go to slide eleven, where we're talking about the compensation strategy. And I appreciate us taking a dive into this because, you know, we know that we need to fairly compensate our teachers because they are really what make us work. When you talk about the stipends there at the bottom bullet, are we, we've talked about, you know, in various discussions, different kinds of stipends, but are we also considering, you know, giving stipends to teachers when they get certain sorts of, you know, professional development foundations, like the way that some other school districts are doing? Because there are some school districts that are doing that to incentivize sort of additional certifications.
All right, I'll hand that off to the expert.
Yes, during Budget Commission last month, we talked about strategic stipends for retention, including paying teachers for getting endorsement and reading an ESOL in particular, because we found that those teachers who complete the ESOL endorsement are growing our students quicker and faster. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Ms. Lawson, thank you, because Tamara took my third question. But I appreciate you reiterating the fact that professional development is really where we need to start making our focus. I think, I think many of us who've been around in APS understand that we have many tools, but maybe we don't necessarily know how to use our, all our tools as best we can. If we can get some PD around that, it would make us more effective as an organization to ultimately help our children. So I appreciate your comments on that, if you have something else to offer.
Yep, so we talked about total reward and that, yes, compensation is a huge factor. And getting us to a point where we're near the top at the seventy-fifth percentile is important, but also making sure that we have space for teachers to grow in their practice is what our teachers are telling us. And we've connected with them through various ways, through the Teacher Advisory Council or what have you, and they are guiding us where we're going related to our offering. So ESOL endorsement, offering, continuous PD as it relates to their practice is what they want, they want targeted PD. So we're working on that.
Okay, great. And I, I know that's got to be a bit of a trick with respect to time and, you know, what we ask of them with respect to teaching our children and then making sure that they have time for themselves to get that professional development. So I hope we're being thoughtful about how we weigh that across their school year, if that makes sense, from a, from a professional development standpoint, just recognizing the fact that we need to somehow incorporate that into their day. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate my colleague bringing it up. So I'm gonna go backwards now. So that was my number three, so we're good. So my number two is with, with respect to salary increases, and I understand that when we talked about this in Budget Commission, we talked about it being kind of a salary increase across not just teachers, but all kind of student support is kind of what I heard, and you correct me if I'm wrong. But one of the areas I've gotten some feedback on is with respect to special education children who need additional support, who actually need like medical nurses at their care, given their severity of their, of their, of their need, of their special education need. And I wanted to make sure that when we're looking at all of this, that we're being respectful of the fact that if we need medically certified professionals to assist children in their, in their day, that we're being competitive in that space with respect to compensation. Because I, I, I think, I think there's a lot going on in that area, and I don't mean to be disrespectful by any means, I'm just asking the question.
Yep, you're not being disrespectful, you're right on point. So as it relates to compensation, you all approved a comprehensive compensation study in December because our recommendation is that APS is in a red zone for all positions. So next month, or next week, actually, we'll be discussing other positions outside of teachers. So that will include positions that support.
Okay, all right, I just want to kind of raise that flag because that was brought to my attention. Okay, so we got number two off, so we're back up to number one. I appreciate my colleagues' remarks with respect to how funds are allocated to charter and partner schools and what's left over. However, I want to make it really clear that eighty percent of our budget does not, while we may say it goes to our traditional schools, it does not go directly into our traditional schools, that we have other, we have other expenses that do not, how do I say this politely? That do not go directly to our traditional schools. They're, they're compensated over, over the organization so that we function as an organization, and our traditional schools are basically funded through SSF, which I believe we, we agree is, 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 is an interesting idea and maybe the right way to approach things, but it's still not getting the funds that we need in our traditional schools in the same way that we give money to our charters and our partners. And I, I, I just would like a better explanation on that, please.
Sure, so I do, I, I think Matt had a slide in his presentation that showed the direct allocation to our traditional schools through SSF and those additional funds that come on top of group position allocations like special ed or our ESOL positions or some other turnaround type funding. And we also did a per pupil analysis of the, what we called overhead, or that central office support overhead. And that's where you see the overall allocation to our traditional schools is a little over eighteen thousand and similar to our charters and partner schools. I think charters is actually, the average is closer to sixteen thousand to seventeen thousand. So, yes, like for like, the per pupil is the same. It's where you feel the, the, the decision authority with those funds. I think that's where the difference can feel. There's certainly some portion of that per pupil allocation that goes to charter that are funding their administrative overhead. I don't, off the top of my head, have line of sight into what their administrative share is or what they're paying for transportation, but there are these other structures that that per pupil is funding outside of direct classroom support in the charter and partner schools, similarly to us, they're organizations that have that sort of overhead as well. So I think that's part of what can cause that confusion. When we see the eighteen thousand for a charter, we sometimes make the assumption that that full eighteen thousand is going direct to students in those schools and maybe less so in our district. But I just am not quite sure that that's how that breaks out.
I would agree with you. However, somehow, as an organization, we need to clear up what the perception is.
And it starts here by having the actual direct communication that's being laid out. And so I think it's, I think this is a good form for, for just that. Thank you.
I do think, I don't know that, and Matt might have referred me, I might have missed it, but I do know in past years, when we've done these charts, because there was a question about the, the sixty-five percent allocation to instruction, and so we showed the, we pulled the DE forty-six, which is the state reporting public document that we and charters have to submit to the state, and compared the traditional school APS allocation by function with the charter and partners. And you could still see it broke out roughly equivalent. So that's where you would see that. And again, I don't know when the last time we've done that analysis is, but to your point around clearing up the perception and continuing to support the narrative, we can pull that back down and see, is it still shaking out the same way? We know that our own allocations by functions have shifted post-COVID, that we no longer are funding at sixty-five percent instruction. We're much more heavily into student support services, nurses, counselors, psychologists. I don't know if charter and partner schools, we would see that same, that same breakout or that same showing as we allocate that, but it'd be interesting to pull the data and do that analysis.
Thank you so much, Jen.
Just learning how to use it. Thank you for the info specifically on nine, ten, and eleven. So in our, you know, decade plus in APS, I've never heard the level of concern I'm hearing now about teachers leaving and why. I think it's very helpful that we potentially, in whatever capacity is reasonable, to socialize this information. This is not the information that people are sharing with me. So I think that's great to clarify because I'm hearing like we're on the totem, yeah, we're just as low as we could be, and I don't, obviously, that's, you know, I'm saying it, but you're, you know, you're the one with the acronym, not me. So I also think, you know, when we look at the particular district that is very much higher, significantly higher than the others, that is the one I continue to hear about. I mean, at every event of just our teachers leaving. And so I appreciate you and your continued, you know, creativity and innovation on how can we retain? It won't be enough just a stipend here and there, right? And I think about the teachers we have and who has influenced my child's life, and like, I'm so grateful to that group. But I think whatever we can do, whatever support the board can give, like, we have to be more competitive. But I also appreciate, like, if we have clarification out in the world, I'm, you know, excited to direct people to these slides specifically, but I think there's, there is just a litany of misinformation about what our teachers get paid compared to others. And so that is going to be, that's going to solve a lot of problems, just clearing that up as soon as, you know, in whatever way is reasonable.
I can say that part of what we were seeing as the recommendation is a deeper investment in base salary. So we have done a lot over the last few years in one-time stipends and, and incentives and hiring incentives, and put a lot of money towards that to address specific issues. And now what we're seeing is the issue is base salary. And so at our cabinet retreat, it was actually a much easier conversation than we, we had anticipated in how to close the budget gap. Because when we were confronted with the data and on these charts, it really is all about all in on salary this year. And so that is the proposal. We've gone back to the drawing board and asked all of our budget center managers to look at their request and peel back those requests so that we can prioritize salary in this upcoming budget cycle.
Okay, and that's great because I think everyone in this room would agree, like, we cannot do it without this body of people that are teaching our kids. We just, we simply cannot be successful, so thank you for that.
Okay, I just have two quick questions. And I didn't see it in the update, but if I missed it at a committee meeting or something, please just refresh me. I know the ESR funds deadline is September twenty twenty-four. I wanted to see, or if you could tell me, like, what does the monthly update spending, those funds, look like? And then the other question, and what's the funding priority for that? So then the other question is, not regarding the ESR funds, but regarding the budget, how is it aligned with our goals and guardrails? Was student outcome focused? Like, go one, two, three, four, what does the alignment look like with our budget?
Got it. You did not miss it. We are going to be doing the deep dive over the FY twenty twenty-four special revenue accounts next Monday at that Budget Commission as well. And so that's when we will be discussing what the balance of funding is available in our ESR funds and the plan. So the prioritization, prioritization of those funds is a continuation of the strategy developed three years ago. So when we developed the plan for those funds, most of the initiatives were multi-year. So it's continuing to spin down on the priorities we've already established. And so that will be reiterated on Monday. And then around the alignment with goals and guards, guardrails, we did make the attempt to align the budget parameters this year to guards and, goals and guardrails. And we'll be bringing to you a slide on Monday also that calls out those budget parameters in alignment with the investment for FY twenty twenty-four for each one of those budget parameters. I don't know that we have gone to the degree of going the entire budget by, by the different softy goals and guardrails, but we are aligning it to the budget parameters which align to those guardrails.
Thank you.
Quick question, just for clarity, when it comes to the compensation piece. I know the last compensation study that we embarked on and, and it had the recommendations of right size and where salaries were frozen during the stipends. And so it's good to hear that we're at this point now with the base salary. When did we conclude the investments from that study?
Yeah, so we actually did those investments over three years, Nicole, I'm not sure if you know the specifics.
We did phases for the last study. We're not recommending doing that because we're in the fiftieth percentile now. Our outlook is different. What that would look like if we were to do, for instance, one-fourth or a phasing, given that we're in the fiftieth percentile for a teacher, it would not allow them to see much on their paycheck. So we're trying to go what I consider baby bold because we won't be number one, but we will very, we will be very close, that we will plan on phasing, not phasing this approach, that we will go all in and be in at the seventy-fifth.
So then my question is, so thirty-two million is an annual investment, right? And so what conversations are we having in terms of sustainability? Because one thing that we've always pushed as well, we want to, we want to maintain and not be in a position where boards were previous where they halted and it created more, it created more parity than really helping. So that's my first question, because I also think I want to make the point as we're hearing dialogue on the, you know, what we're also hearing dialogue in the field, you know, I guess in the community about the teachers piece as well. What we, what also is not being shared is the counter narrative to all of the cuts and things that Cobb don't have because they are compensa, because there is this compensation piece. And so I think it's also important for us to think of, the biggest piece for me is sustainability because this thirteen, this thirty-two million dollar investment, we need to maintain, you know, we need to maintain it and not be in a space next year, or, you know, just thinking about economics and where we are, so.
So our position and our recommendation is a model that we believe is sustainable. That was one of our priorities, making sure that our structure is sustainable. Also, when we choose not to phase, it helps with eliminating parity along the lines. So that means that teachers that are coming in to the district won't be paid higher than teachers that are already here. Everybody will come in at the same level. So our recommendation is one that we move all teachers incoming and current at the same pace on our pay scale by going all in on this investment and compensation. Second, um, you also mentioned, um, in the past that there were, um, concerns related to, um, sustainability, parity. Again, we have looked at our model. We feel like we can sustain being at the seventy-fifth percentile. We could have easily recommended, we want to be Cobb. We don't think that's sustainable for us. So that's why you see us right there at that speed, five of seventy-five percentile.
Yeah, yeah, definitely understand that. Um, but looking at like our project, you know, our projections over the years, want to just make it very clear that we are all, like you said, if you, if this is all-in approach, we're all-in and that we're not, yeah, yeah, pretty, yep.
So I can, uh, speak to the CFO calls for Emreisa are likely different than the HRO, HR calls over Emreisa. Um, because we are looking out at potential of recession. We're looking at the, um, ESR funds, you know, moving off and having to pull in some more programming. And we have started these conversations, my colleagues can attest, around tightening our belts and starting to streamline and starting to think more austere again.
Yeah.
Um, and really starting to, to get, uh, more in alignment. I will say, um, in the times of a recession where we have to belt tighten, all of these districts are in the same position. And so when we're talking about sustainability, we're all, we're all looking at this economic principle of how we're, our salaries are by nature chasing the inflationary market. Um, and so as inflation cools, we should get to a place where these stuff, where we start, stop tick. I would be interested in seeing this chart over years, over time, because it has been this race and just over the last five years or so. So we are thinking about sustainability. It's not an issue just for APS. It isn't, it's a, uh, it's an issue of everyone who's trying to recruit in this market and looking at the out years of would our finances stay strong, um, in the, in the long term. So this is a model that we do believe is sustainable. Um, it is baby bold, and so we feel like we can make these investments and sustain them in the long term and still stay ahead of other districts who are contemplating these very same questions.
Yeah, I mean, I supported a thousand percent, but I also want to make it clear that we're Atlanta and we're not responding to other districts. So if there has to be any pullback there, I want to make it very clear that we're gonna maintain the importance of our teachers and, and the investment in them in this space. And so just being, just seeing that up and down and experiencing it is more so of like, that traumatic shock that I want to make sure that we're good. We're, we're gonna be all-in here. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Any other questions or, or feedback from my colleagues? Thank you.
I'll just close out as Ms. Brackett and Ms. Lawson take their seat and highlight a few things. So I want to appreciate the questions from the board regarding our budget priorities. I also want to appreciate administration because, uh, both Nicole and Lisa unpacked that as a cabinet, we were very intentional around our clear priority to get behind teacher compensation. We recognize and as I was listening to this conversation, um, I had a mentor who would say this, and I say, I said, don't say it often enough, the victory of work that we do happens in the classroom. And it's happening in the classroom. It's led by our teachers. And we were very intentional, uh, Lisa said it several times, around what we believe we need to do to support this. Uh, similarly, there was a question that was asked that I also just wanted to lift, which was around, do we see whether or not our budget priorities align with what we've talked about relative to SOFTG and the priority work of seeing student achievement and support? And just, I think the response was, we've been consistent with what we've prioritized over the last three years. Of course, I just want to remind us that what we see when we identify SOFTG accountability, whether it's literacy or numeracy, we are tying a good bit of our progress monitoring to the practices that have been in place and that the board has surround, has, has stood behind us to help support, uh, and to ensure that our students, um, make progress. So just wanted to lift that as well. Most importantly, it has been a tremendous amount of teamwork, uh, with a focus on our teachers and the value of what we know they mean in this work. Thank you, Ms. Brackett, for that presentation. Uh, thank you, um, Nicole, for coming up behind that as well. We're now ready to begin the ninth monthly Student Outcomes Focused Governance Progress Monitoring Report on our Goal Three. Goal Three is post-graduate, graduation preparedness, and it focuses on identifying the percentage of high school students who graduate prepared for their next step as demonstrated on a multidimensional assessment that can be progress monitored, which is called the profile of a graduate. I will just acknowledge again that I hear my voice as well as everyone else does. And so I will be thoughtful around talking, uh, through this. This is an engagement, uh, between, uh, the board and the superintendent. And I also want to, as we prepare to go into this, uh, monitoring engagement, bring your attention when I begin to the screen, because we were very thoughtful about our ability to unpack, um, the profile of a graduate for APS. But I will first turn it over to our board chairwoman to establish our expectations.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Heron. And again, just, um, just reiterating, um, that it's time for us to engage into Goal Three that identifies percentage of high school students who are prepared, who graduate prepared for the, for their next step as demonstrated on the multidimensional assessment based on the profile of a graduate. Um, our vision for teaching and learning exemplified by the characteristics of the APS profile of, of a graduate is an exciting step towards preparing each student for their journey into the future and preparing our, uh, staff to help guide the way. And so really excited to be at this point where we are now diving deeper into what that, um, what that profile looks like. Want to take some time to review the norms and expectations of this session as always. And, um, just remember, um, colleagues focusing on creating and engaging dialogue. What are the factors that lead to current levels of achievement? Thinking about, did the district make progress towards the goal and, and being comfortable asking the questions of why or why not? What strategies and re, thinking about what strategies and asking what strategies and resources worked well or did not work well? Asking, um, what changes or adjustments may need to be made? And what will, what additional resources will the district need to continue to strive or meet this goal? And then, of course, what support does the administration needs from us to be successful? Um, also just thinking about your question and comment should not be evaluative or telling, telling the superintendent what to do, not suggesting any administrative actions. And then, of course, referencing data that is not in this, um, and not in this report. If we stray away from these norms or expectations, again, as always, I'll remind us of those norms and expectations. And just kindly ask you guys to rephrase your question or comment to align with the expectations that we've set. And so now, Dr. Heron, please walk us through today's monitoring report.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Last month, we reviewed our progress towards our numeracy goals. This month, we will focus on Goal Three, Profile of a Graduate. Before we dive into the actual report, I feel that it is only right to take a moment to provide some historical context around the profile of a graduate. As this is a first-time engagement, but not only is it a first-time engagement, this is a first-time opportunity for Atlanta Public Schools to unpack this profile. Prior to the inception of the Student Outcomes Focused Governance Framework, which we also refer to as SOFTG, the profile of a graduate lived in our twenty twenty-five strategic plan. With the development of the board goals and guardrails in twenty twenty-one, Goal Three, Post-Graduation Preparedness fueled the APS administration to go on a quest to transform the profile of a graduate from a vision in our strategic plan to a multidimensional assessment that can be progress monitored. As a part of our request, a request for information, an RFI, was issued in August of twenty twenty-one for the Atlanta Public Schools' Profile of a Graduate Assessment Tool. While the RFI provided us with an array of possibilities, we realized that we were tapping into an unchartered space. Additionally, we connected with several research, research partners to explore the possibility of a research practitioner partnership, but were unable to secure a partner with the capacity to support this work in our needed timeframe. Finally, we connected with Chiefs for Change, who was an instrumental thought partner in this work. With the support of Chiefs for Change, a cross-functional committee was created to develop the Profile of a Graduate Multidimensional Assessment. The first task of the committee was to identify definitions for each of the six Profile of a Graduate characteristics. These definitions were developed, reviewed, and revised with the support of the Student Advisory Committee, District Executive Committee, Teacher Advisory, Principal Advisory, Spanish-speaking families, and the Internal Steering Committee. Lastly, the committee worked to develop metrics to measure each of the chara- characteristics based on the definitions. And these mes- metrics were also built with the advisement of both internal and external stakeholders. So what you will see today is our administration's first attempt to develop a multidimensional assessment to measure the characteristics of the profile of a graduate. And now I will walk you through each of the Profile of a Graduate characteristic definitions and metrics used to measure each characteristic. We will start our discussion with self-directed and goal-oriented, which is defined by a student encompassing the following characteristics. Number one, student is motivated, accomplishing ambitious goals to learn new skills and gain new knowledge. Number two, builds resilience by learning from failures, adapting to change, and persevering. And three, balances intellectual, physical, and emotional aspects of life. A student is considered self-directed and goal-oriented based on the following metrics. Fall postgraduate plans, confidence in the ability to achieve, confidence in the ability to accomplish goals, being prepared to identify strengths and weaknesses, pathway completion, and prepared to, and pass of an, and passing of an end of pathway assessment. Excuse me. Students who embody our second characteristic, self-reflective and globally connected, hold a deep understanding of their own emotions, thoughts, and values and how they influence behavior. The student is self-reflective, understanding personal strengths, opportunities for growth, learning needs, and alignment of decisions with their personal values. Two, find, evaluate, and uses information responsibly to be an engaged citizen who advocates for just causes. They value civic responsibility, democracy, and multi-party systems. They maintain open-mindedness to others, including those from backgrounds, cultures, and contexts different from their own. And they show caring, compa- caring, compassion, and respect towards others. They have a positive social and cultural identity, including a sense of agency, self-confidence, and self-awareness. The self-reflected and globally connected characteristics are measured based on the following metrics. Number one, prepared to understand events in other countries, completion of community service credit, enrollment and passing grades in a world language, enrollment and passing grades in social studies courses, openness towards different opinions and perspectives, and fair treatment of other students. Our third characteristic, fully engaged learners, is defined as a student who, number one, shows encourage, encouragement and ownership of their learning. They show engagement and ownership of their learning. Communicates effectively about their academic, extracurricular, career, and personal interests and concerns. Exercises their choice in academic settings, making informed choices about the future based on their needs. And three, demonstrate skills at sharing personal stories and public speaking. The fully engaged learner characteristic is measured by, number one, feeling successful at school. Two, fitting in at school. Three, looking forward to school. Four, regular attendance. Five, prepared to become successful. And six, connected to others at school. Students who epitomize our fourth characteristic, academically prepared, demonstrate mastery of content standards, creating a new foundation for success. Students who epitomize our fourth characteristic, academically prepared. Number one, demonstrate mastery of content standards, which create a strong foundation for success. Number two, applies classroom knowledge and twenty-first century skills, collaboration, creation, creative think, critical thinking, um, in authentic real-world contexts. Those are some of those twenty-first century learning skills. And three, they're able to set, monitor, and evaluate their own learning goals. They're able to make choices among and succeed along multiple pathways. For example, college career entrepreneurship and service by using life skills, including digital and financial literacy. The academically prepared characteristic is measured by six indicators. One, on-time graduation. Two, Georgia milestone proficiency. Three, enrollment and passing grades in ELA courses. Four, enrollment and passing grades in math courses. Five, college-ready SAT or ACT scores. And six, enrolled in college. So our fifth characteristic, resourceful and driven, is defined as a student who, number one, is driven to accomplish personal and group goals. Two, is resourceful and motivated to contribute to solutions to societal problems. For example, racism, inequality, climate change, poverty, human conflict, and other forms of social injustice in their chosen community. And three, uses networks of family, school, and community supports to manage their lives and to persist through possible setbacks. The resourceful and driven characteristic is measured based on the following five metrics. Completion of college applications. Number two, completion of FAFSA, of FAFSA-esque applications. Three, prepared to overcome obstacles. Four, perceived support from peers. Five, perceived support from adults. Students then who embody our sixth and final characteristic, critical thinker and skilled problem solver. Number one, reasons effectively to make decisions and connections through critical thinking. Number two, they spot weaknesses and arguments and grounds views and evidence and reflects on current beliefs with an openness to possibly changing them. And three, solves academic, social, and real-world problems in traditional and innovative ways. Nurture their natural curiosity. The critical thinker and skilled problem solver characteristics are measured based on the following. Number one, they're prepared to solve problems. Two, prepared to be a critical thinker. Three, enrollment and passing grades in science courses. And four, enrollment and passing grades in IB, AP, or dual enrollment classes. So again, that captures the six domains or profiles that we've identified for the profile of a graduate, self-directed and goal-oriented, self-reflective and globally connected, fully engaged learners, academically prepared, and resourceful and driven. And of course, the six characteristic, critical thinker and skilled problem solver. Again, as a reminder, in identifying these domains, we worked with our Student Advisory Committee, District Executive Committee, Teacher Advisory, Principal Advisory, Spanish-speaking families, and the Internal Steering Committee for us to get to this point. We believe that profile characteristics are critical skills for engaged citizenship, successful career path beyond high school, and meaningful community involvement. We are excited to explore how each of the profile characteristics will be demonstrated at different grade levels in future reports. Now I will direct your attention to figure one in the Board Goal Monitoring Report. Goal Three identifies the percentage of high school students who graduate prepared for their next step as demonstrated on a multidimensional assessment based on the profile of, of a graduate will increase from seventy-two percent in May of twenty twenty-two to Y percent in May of twenty twenty-six. We need to keep in mind the following when reviewing this report. For the current board report, we will share our baseline data for students enrolled in the twelfth grade during the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. But please keep in mind that these students were at the tenth grade during the COVID-nineteen disruption and spent the majority of their eleventh grade year receiving remote instruction. Interruptions and instruction due to the pandemic must be taken into consideration. Interruptions and instruction due to the pandemic must be taken into consideration. During the post-pandemic period, we are continuing the process of transforming many individual school-level initiatives into one cohesive district-level improvement effort that serves the needs of all traditional APS students. Future board reports will compare cohort data, for example, 12th-grade students in school year 2021-22 compared to 12th-grade students in school year 22-23. Now I would like to call your attention to figure one. School year 21-22 is the baseline school year for goal three. On average, seventy-two percent of 12th-grade students in 21-22 school year embody the characteristics of a profile of a graduate. But please note that school year 2018 through 19, through 2019 through 21 data is not available. It is unavailable because this multidimensional assessment was developed during the 22-23 school year using 21-22 data. School year 22 to 23 to 25-26 annual targets for profile of a graduate results will be determined as we engage further in this work. So given the number of initiatives in place to support post-secondary preparedness, we believe we will be on track to meet our school year 25-26 goal. This status will be reevaluated at the conclusion of the 22-23 school year when we have the ability to compare data from the current 12th-grade students to the prior-year 12th-grade I would like to call your attention to figure two. Figure two provides us with the definitions of profile of a graduate characteristics that we reviewed earlier. Once again, I'll simply repeat those. I've said them a couple of times already. Those characteristics include, number one, self-reflective and globally connected; two, fully engaged learners; three, academically prepared; four, resourceful and driving; five, critical thinker and skilled problem solver; and six, self-directed and goal-oriented. Now we're going to look at figure three. The figure displays the average percentage of 12th-grade students who embody each of the six profile of a graduate characteristics. So so far from this figure, we can see the following: eighty-four point four percent of students who were identified as self-reflective and globally connected are here. Seventy-one point six percent of our students were identified as fully engaged. Sixty-three point five were identified as academically prepared. Seventy-nine point three percent of our students were identified as resourceful and driven. And seventy point six percent of the students were identified as critical thinker and skilled problem solver. Sixty-two point five percent of our students were identified as self-directed and goal-oriented. It is worth noting that each of the profile of a graduate characteristic averages are composed of an average of metrics aligned with each characteristic definition. While many districts across the U.S. have created a vision for their graduates through a portrait or profile of a graduate, Atlanta Public Schools, and I do want us to hear this, is the first of any known school district to embark on measuring and monitoring the progress of the profile of a graduate's characteristics. That is important to note and worth repeating, that APS is the first of any known school district to embark on measurements and monitoring the progress of the profile of a graduate. The profile or portrait of a graduate has emerged quite intentionally over the last several years, closely, close to say, over the last five to 10 years across the country. But we are one of the first to push into metrics as much as we know. And given the innovative nature of this work, APS will need support in the following areas: support in sharing, the vision of the profile of a graduate with community members, willingness to explore additional indicators of the profile of a graduate's characteristics, and time, and time, time to refine the measure, the time to refine the metrics to measure the profile of a graduate at lower grade levels, because that too has surfaced in conversation. The final section of this report, section five, profile of a graduate characteristic level metrics and business rules, is provided to allow readers to better understand how each of the six profile of a graduate characteristic averages were calculated. It is worth noting that each of our profile of a graduate characteristics were measured from a combination of student perception data from the 2022 Senior Exit Survey and the school year 21-22 Georgia Health Survey, Georgia Student Health Survey, as well as student academic data. That's really important in noting, because I anticipate that being a question that is top of mind. Additionally, I am thoughtful and reflective around the vast amount of information shared in this first iteration of what is new to us in the profile of a graduate. I'm thoughtful about some of the feedback even received to date, and we are, two things, excited to bring this forward, because we do recognize, I recognize, our team, clearly from those who were stakeholders. We recognize the importance of creating the structure for identifying for APS what we believe is a profile of a graduate. We're excited to do that in a way that we believe we are leaders. At the same time, I'm going to use a word that I heard, it is voluminous. To that end, we are thoughtful about the feedback that might come in today's engagement. We are receptive to it. It is just out of conversation, as it is our first time to progress monitor this, and for two reasons. If for any reason, Madam Chair, as questions surface, we know, I know, that in this engagement, this is the board and the superintendent. Given reasons tied to the voice and the first time, if necessary, I may or may not call on some assistance in response, but otherwise, I am ready to engage around any questions. This concludes the overview of the April Board Monitoring Report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Herring. Okay, let's go ahead and dive in. Any questions? I will start on this end with Kate. Kate, do you have any? Okay, who else? Let me just do a quick round. Robin.
Yeah. I know we'll go back and forth.
Cameron, Cynthia, and then Jessica.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Herring. I'm sorry that you had to go over this particular goal with your voice. I was thinking the timing wasn't great on this one. And do really appreciate all the work that's been done to identify these attributes that I think are important for our students. I also have concerns around how we measure in a very focused, intentional way, and with the metrics we have, this particular goal and this profile. Knowing that we have to look at interims, and again, also the resources that will need to be dedicated to improving student outcomes, not to take, again, not to take away from knowing this information, but again, our job with our goals is to be focused in improvement for our students and really honing in on the work that needs to be done. Again, though, this is great information. I know a lot of work went into it. And I have a couple of questions I'll start with, and I know you cannot read through all these slides. I really hope the public does look at this information, because it is dense, it is, I think, telling and informative. Some of it, and I'm going to be asking some technical and tactical questions, which I will, I've sent to you, Dr. Herring, and I'll send to my colleagues, too. Typically, we would not reference those right now, but since this is a new progress monitoring report and a profile for us on this particular goal, I will touch on some of those types of questions, for instance, some that seem more subjective versus quantifiable. And I'm going to go to one of the attributes, the academically prepared slide, which is... Is it seven? Thank you, Rada. Just have my notes. So academically prepared, looking at that one in particular. So for the sake of the public, and just to go over it before my question, we're showing right now, we believe, sixty-three point five percent, based on what we're measuring, of our high schoolers are academically prepared. And that's based on graduating on time, eighty-four percent, Georgia milestones proficiency, forty-seven percent, enrollment and passing ELA course, eighty-seven percent, enrollment and passing math course, eighty-seven point five percent, college and career-ready SAT and ACT, twenty point five percent, enrolled in college, fifty-five. Based on that information, two of my questions are, what is this telling us about the preparedness of our students for college or career or both? And second, understanding many students don't test well. In fact, I was not a good test taker. Is it usual, though, to see forty-seven percent of our students proficient in milestones while eighty-seven percent are passing ELA and math? Same question for SAT and ACT readiness, which again, I think this metric or profile or how am I, attribute underneath our profile is actually really helpful, because these are quantifiable metrics right here, so I want to celebrate this one in particular. And would love to hear feedback from you and any support you need considering your voice, which I feel for you. I have been there many times.
So I have two questions. And the first was, with academically prepared average of sixty-three point five percent, identifying the characteristics that we've lifted in that, what do we believe that this tells us? Well, it tells us a couple of things. So just for carefulness, it tells us several things, and my statement is not the final statement in what it tells us. It is the observation, the feedback in this conversation, number one, that we have a cohort or a component of our students that are making progress towards graduation and leaving us academically prepared. At the same time, there is still additional work to do. So it's a dual dynamic of the balance. One of the things I think about often with our SOFG engagement and what it has opened up in conversations, is that this is an extraordinarily transparent conversation around what we see, what oftentimes is not talked about. The details are in here, which really leads to the second question, which I may ask you to repeat, which was tied to what we see in Georgia milestones versus what we see in comparison to. Could you repeat that so that I can be clear on how I follow?
Absolutely. And I know that was a lot I went over, so I appreciate you asking me to clarify. And again, thank you for lifting up transparency, because that's what this work is about, and then what we do to address it and improve student outcomes. My second question, my first one, just to go over it again, but you touched on it, what is this telling us about the preparedness of our students for college or career or both? And then even more specifically, with this data, understanding many students don't test well, is it so usual to see forty-seven percent proficient in milestones while eighty-seven percent are passing ELA and math? Same for SAT and ACT readiness, like you're saying, or just said, the comparison between, you know, seeing how our students are doing in their coursework and then how they're doing on these end-of-year assessments. Is that something that we see typically, or is, you know, a combination of being unique to APS or our students? And what is it really telling us about the realities for our students on the ground and what we're doing to further support based on our priorities, too, and what we think? And I would love to hear your take on this with your team around what is being shown to best prepare students for college and career? Like, what are we seeing? What are best practices? Because these things are all important, and we know we need to focus in on this particular set of information that shows realities, but we also know we can't do everything that's in this profile as, you know, well as we want to, just considering resource-wise. So I'm just going to put that out there.
No, I appreciate it. And I'm confident that I have responses, and also is equally confident that I won't be able to say it all. So the other, so let's start with where you ended, the forty-seven percent in milestone performance, and then a higher percentage as it relates to ELA and mathematics scores, mathematics and scoring. One of the reasons why we execute milestone and do state accountability is for us to have a sense of where our students are performing. It is a snapshot, but is an important one, which is why in this administration, we've brought on MAP. But why is it important? Because we have to know where to intervene so that we can start to see progress. And when interventions are done with fidelity, we should see some level of change or progress or improvement in ELA and math when our interventions, and I'm not solely referring to an intervention that is a tool or a platform, but the full scale of intervention, teacher support, teacher resources, learning walks, interventions that allow for us to monitor. So if we don't see that level of performance, we should anticipate some level of improvement unless greater resources are needed. Is that typical? Nothing's typical post-pandemic. And I'm just going to say that as a professional and as an educator, because we're in an atypical moment. But part of what we're seeing will give us some baseline on what we can project and how we might need to intervene more intentionally along the way. So that's the first response to that that I would share as an important question. This is our first time looking at this with all of these characteristics, if you will, put together in a, in a, how do I want to, it's kind of sandwiched together to keep it simple. So those are different components. The other thing you talked about was the college and career readiness, and I really appreciate that you named, and everyone isn't a solid test taker. Those are facts. So part of what we need to also entertain as we continue along this journey is whether or not we believe that these are all of the right characteristics, but for now, this is what we bring forward. And in doing so, we look at both college and career readiness and those enrolled in college, and is there an opportunity for us to consider more? Sure. Where might that fall? Which is why I've also been intentional in this year to speak about credentialing, students who are entrepreneurs. Everybody's not necessarily pursuing a two- or four-year college degree, which doesn't mean that he or she isn't going to enter into a successful postgraduate experience. And how do we better accommodate for that? So I take us back to the timeframe that we've had to build this, to bring this as a first time forward today, but to also own that as we think about the long-term trajectory of our students, there could be some more space for that. I hope that touches on that a bit. And then the other thing I just wanted to add relative to what does this tell us? I put to the side in my own notes, just the word opportunity, because I don't want to minimize that. When you can get this granular and we engage with the board and the superintendent about this type of work, there are going to be plenty of opportunities for us to revisit what we've always done to decide whether or not that's the way we want to keep moving forward. At the same time, one of the things that I was adamant about along this journey was student voice, student voice, student voice, because this is, the profile of an APS graduate isn't about the teacher, or the principal or superintendent of the board is about the student. And so it is hopeful that the opportunity where students can be that much more intentional and we can even grow in their involvement, will be another opportunity for us to determine how we can best work together with them to see a successful journey. I caution myself in not going too lengthy in response, as I shared earlier, because this is our first time, but I just appreciate the question.
Thank you for all that. I think this data helps us with our other goal around college and career preparedness. So I will pause there. I have lots of other questions, but I would definitely hear from my colleague.
Thank you, Dr. Herring, for that answer, because that was touching on one of my questions, because I jumped onto slide seven right away and saw that we have fifty-five percent of our seniors enrolled in college, but twenty percent of them had college-ready SAT and SAT scores, but you touched on a lot of that. One question I have about the data, just to help me understand that, a lot of these are based on the 2022 Senior Exit Survey, and I see that we had two thousand three hundred and sixteen seniors take that. What I don't know is how many seniors we had and what the take rate was. So, I mean, depending on which one of the numerical things you have in here, it's anywhere between thirty-eight hundred and forty-eight hundred, just depending on, so it would seem to be somewhere between fifty and sixty percent of our seniors took that.
I'm really taking it. I want to verify that as, did Monique step away or Joe? Yep. The question simply was, can we look at the total number of students that took the 2022 Senior Exit Survey in comparison to the actual number of students in the graduating class? class and verify whether or not?
Well, in the class, but also you have some of them who didn't graduate, right? So we have the graduation rate in here.
Yes, ma'am.
So the total number of seniors that we had that year versus the one who took.
That's fair. She's pulling the date. I just don't have that type of mind, but that's a fair question. Yes, ma'am.
It's okay, yeah, you can, because that might help explain like some of the disconnects, I think, between some of the qualitative answers and some of the quads.
Yep.
All right. Do you have it?
So I can pull it and I can come back with the exact amount for you.
All right. First, just let me applaud the effort put into building this profile. As someone in the college access space, it's really exciting to see the district kind of lead and thinking through what our students need in order to be successful for their next steps. I think, I had the question around numbers of seniors total as well and just kind of, can you clear, just maybe conceptualize a little bit first for me, like how you see the relationships between Goals Three and Goals Four working? Because I'm seeing some of those same metrics around like the S A T pieces and things that were in Goal Four. And so as we're thinking about building out like the interim goals and those pieces, like how do you see Goals Three and Goals Four really painting a true picture for us to understand? And then I have a question, a couple of questions after that.
No, that's fine. Can we pull up Goal Three and Goal Four so that I can? Are you bringing that forward, Travis? Come, just fine. Thank you.
I can attempt to speak to some of this in how the sausage was made, if that's all right. So particularly when it comes to the academically prepared profile of a graduate, you'll see a lot of overlap in the other board goals because the board goals primarily focus on academic preparedness. So you see a lot of similarity in college career readiness, literacy and numeracy. And so that was by design that there was alignment in these profile of a graduate characteristics and the board, the other board goals. One other piece I want to call out is also on subjective versus kind of quantifiable measures and would love feedback from the board on whether some of this falls into interim or at this level. We heard throughout engagement over and over again that some of the quantifiable objective measures don't paint the full picture of what students feel, need, desire when they leave APS. And so some of these subjective measures, like you see in Georgia Student Health Survey and the Senior Exit Survey, help paint a better picture of the student experience and what confidence, what they believe they have when they leave APS, that, as was mentioned before, that a test score alone could not help. So whether some of those revert to leading indicators or interim indicators, whether it's finding that right balance, we attempted to find a good balance by taking the definitions first. Oftentimes when we do strategic planning, y'all know, we figure out what's easy to measure and then build from that. We took a different approach and said, don't think about how you measure anything when you define what a critical thing is. Because if you did, then you would be stuck with what's possible to measure. And so then we focused on the definitions first and then tried to tie both quantifiable and kind of qualitative measures to those definitions. So just to paint a little more colorful picture of why this looks different than some of the other.
Can I just appreciate that, Travis, as a reminder? That makes me want to just lift, from a research researcher standpoint, that's a mixed methodology in that we're thinking about both quantitative and qualitative responses. And I think that that's incredibly important because we're talking about the journey of a child. That's number one. Number two, that may or may not be solely certain, but that we value what that means as it relates to the success of their journey, but that in the space of accountability, it's also important that we quantify what we can while being able to capture voice. So you heard us earlier speak about student agency and voice.
And so, and thank you for lifting that up. I think because of work with seniors, one area that I would kind of lift up is if we're particularly under this self-directed and goal-oriented and, you know, looking at the survey data, if I just say, for instance, the fall postgraduate plans, we know a lot of seniors say, yes, I have a plan. And then summer passes and then they're knocking on other agency, external agencies' doors saying, I don't have, I didn't have a plan. And so I think some of these indicators, we really need to have like the proof in the pudding. And so are there other data sources that we could be looking at, like the youth science reports, like the Georgia Futures Individual Graduation Plans? Or even I saw like we were pulling some information from Achieve Atlanta. Are there trusted partners at the table that have some of those actual tangible outcomes kind of focused, like this is the proof that I have a plan in hand, information that we could kind of hang our hat on?
Great question. It's a simple answer. The answer is yes. There are, there are other data points that we certainly can galvanize together, partners and others, proven, verified, trusted partners where we have data sharing agreements, et cetera. Please note that that is also a part of our consideration. Are there other data points? I would even add to, and I appreciate the listing of what I heard you say. I'm thoughtful about how even now, as I hear more from corporate partners or business partners, this push for even more individuals who want to offer for our students experiences with apprenticeships, internships, how do you account for that, measure that and see how that too is applicable? So yes, there are multiple, there are other data sources in this first attempt, right? In this first attempt, we've worked to streamline. But the other part of the first attempt is to hear what is also the pleasure of the board as we work to define this as best we can. And just a gentle reminder that it's not just our first attempt. To our knowledge, the metrics and the measuring is the first period. So in many ways, we may also be establishing a blueprint or setting a path for others who want to figure out how this might look for children.
So a couple of things, right? So we're looking at the students holistically, right? And this, this is great, right? It's so many different components. The thing that stood out to me is you look at slide eight and we've got, you know, these, the percentage of the students that feel supported by their peers is high, supported by adults is high. You look at six and they're, you know, the percentage of kids that feel successful at school is high. And then oddly, we're at fifty-nine percent of the kids that look forward to going to school. So tying it back to your comment about just impactful, powerful importance of student voice, I would love to understand, why are you not looking forward to coming to school? When, when a lot of these other measurements are really positive, but if, if you're not looking forward to coming to school, there's something to that. Now that, you know, I don't know when we do these surveys, if we collect that data, but I think it would be worthwhile as we have prioritized this as being a critical focus. But I, there's such a delta between that number and some of the other things. I'm just hopeful that we can get to the why that is so we can solve that problem and see that number change.
So I want to appreciate that question or that, I don't know if it was a question as much as it was a statement that I think is extremely important. So the two, three things that came to mind for me then in hearing that was number one, culture. And I want to bring us back to our guardrails as well because with SOFG, we've also been intentional around the culture and the environment that we want our students and our staff to be able to thrive in. For me, it's simple joy, right? But I also own that that may not be, we know in some instances, that is not yet the full reality. And so how do we measure and account for that? How do we ensure that the culture is not an adult-driven culture, but a child-focused culture? And we have, the superintendent is naming, particularly as we have pivoted out of the pandemic, we have a very clear opportunity to hone in all the more on that. So that absolutely stands out. I think one of the curiosities for me, even in this profession, has been how do you effectively measure that? And we mentioned earlier that I closed with naming, one of our other long-term goals is to move beyond high school. So what does that experience look like in the elementary grades, middle and high? And if for some reason along the journey, instead of getting better, it does quite the opposite, what is that about? And what is it that we must do and own? And so I, I want to say something really simple, like I feel you on that question or that statement, but we own it. And when I say we own it, it is not perfect. There are issues that sit and exist right now in some of our schools, but we are working intentionally and deliberately around that. One of the most powerful things the board has elected to do and one of the things that we have that's important is not just our student advisory, student advisory council, but even breakfast with the board. Children will, students will, scholars will tell you their experiences. They are very capable of doing so. How do we expand the opportunity to get that type of feedback in a way that can be measured is the work? Because I just want to name that as an opportunity. This engagement is for us to take away what you might want to see more and I feel as though that's what you're naming was something you'd like to see.
Just to follow up on my information request, because I also want to understand who we're missing, like when we're talking about the who in that survey. And so like, were they represented at all of our traditional high schools and all of that stuff?
Yes, that's fine.
All right, perfect. So I do have the numbers that you asked for. So for the Senior Exit Survey, we had two thousand three hundred and sixteen students complete that. So that's going to be all of our 12th grade students. That includes our charter and partners with the exception of Drew and Atlanta Classical. And so the Senior Essex Survey is actually a partnership. So the survey is a partnership between APS, College Advising Corpse and Achieve Atlanta. So actually Achieve Atlanta and College Advising Corpse helped us with crafting the questions that were added to the Senior Essex Survey to help us with measuring the metrics that you see for profile of a graduate. And so that comes out to about seventy-two percent of the 12th grade students that completed the survey.
So what was the total number of 12th graders?
Oh, I'm sorry, three thousand two hundred and three. So that's 12th grade students, period. So that's going to be students that had been with us possibly for five years. So, you know, so it's going to be, and again, anyone that had enough credits to be considered in 12th grade.
Okay. And we, we feel pretty good that they are, like any schools not taking the survey?
Um, not taking the survey.
Said all of them took.
With the exception of two. So Atlanta Classical and Drew did not take that. And that was just because they did not have a College Advising Corpse advisor at that time that the survey was administered to help with the logistics of it.
Okay, so there, so all of those charter, charter high schools, they're not.
They.
Kip is in here.
Kip is in here. Harbor Steam is in here.
Parker School.
Partner schools are in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Alternative schools are in there.
Correct. Yep. So it's everyone except those two schools.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, we have a couple of minutes, so we have to really wrap it up.
My only, I guess, point was, I think this data would be great in our climate and cultural guardrail and assessing it. I mean, that's what really hit me several times in looking at this. It's, it's great information to have. Again, going back to our goals and measuring them with more quantifiable qualitative data. Some of this is, it is purely subjective, which is again, great data, but I just think this would be great to be included in our climate and culture guardrail and I look forward to seeing that develop as well. Thank you.
Great.
Last question, just understanding the monitoring schedule for this, being this our first time having this report available, how, what's, what's schedule would this be in terms of the coming before the board?
That's a great question, Board Chairwoman.
Versus like seeing this May of, I mean, April of 2024?
So to, I'm going to tag team a little bit, Dr. Smith, with this one. So this is our first time and it is imperative that we have some level of cadence. Number one, if we stay with the cadence that we've been doing in this first year, would it be a year from now, the same time? Or do we find it to our benefit to review this again? Because at some point, we also referenced that we'll have additional data at the close of this academic year, which will perhaps give us an opportunity in the fall to do that. So I think what you're asking a question that we can create the answer to versus saying this is the definitive answer. Is that fair? I think so. You can second, you can say yes, Dr. Herring, that's fair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear your whole statement.
Oh, man. Somebody, come on.
I apologize.
She said, I gotta die. She said that there is an opportunity to create some monitoring point during the school year, knowing that a lot of this data will be available at the end of this academic year so there could possibly be an opportunity just to see what we were, where we were in the, like in the fall.
In the fall.
Correct. So majority of the data we will have in the fall with the exception of the college enrollment data because we won't receive that from the National Student Clearinghouse until around January-ish, is around when we get that data. But majority of the data we could show like in the late fall.
That'd be good if we can, if you, the administration can think about building in a touch point of this, this goal during the, in that fall cycle as well, just to see how we're trending and monitoring.
And then may I, Board Chairwoman, very quickly. I did not mention one thing, which was the work that we have been doing deliberately around the APS Five. If we continue to implement the work within the APS Five and I, just because, number one, we talk about curriculum and instruction. Number two, whole child intervention. We talk about signature programming. We also talk about personalized learning. Now there's a fifth, look at there, come on. Data and data as a driver for all of this, it will absolutely impact what we're also seeing as this is the first time to talk about the profile. Finally, last statement. As, as our stakeholders take this in, I'm going to emphasize, just like this entire year, this has been a first. And so this, this data is telling. It is our first effort to, to put it out there. And putting it out there, we own it. It is an opportunity for us to do more. Is it exactly where we want it to be? No. But in the same way that we've put out the SOFG data relative to literacy, numeracy, and now even with the profile of a graduate, we see in front of us this collective opportunity to say candidly to the board, here is what we want to do and here's how we want to continue to improve. That has been our truth throughout this journey. Although data can be used in many ways, our intent is to use it for the good of students and to also engage in healthy conversation with parents and others. And this is what I've been pushing to the team. And we need to help with the SOFG narrative because for the first time, we're having conversations that aren't happening anywhere else at the day, in the way that we are, in the way that we are doing it. But part of that is our ownership of it and to name that we believe this is an opportunity to do by our children. So that's it.
Thank you. One, let, yeah, two seconds.
Real quick, when we present the data again in fall or when we decide it's coming, quick request if we can have it disaggregated so we can look at apples to apples. So assuming that Drew and the other missing school will have someone in place, if we can look at it without them, since that's how we had it, and then look at it with them added in so it's not an artificial bump or decline. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm hearing no additional questions or feedback. We will.
This concludes our presentations, Madam Chair.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone, for your reports. Madam, Madam General Counsel, is there a reason for the board to retreat into executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair, the board needs to consider student and personnel matters.
Okay. Is there a motion to enter into executive, executive session to discuss student and personnel matters?
So moved.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Jennifer McDonald. Do I have a second? Second by Aretha Baldwin. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now enter into executive session. Thank you so much.
Hello, I am your Atlanta Board of Education District Five Representative, Erica Mitchell, and I am happy to share with you some March community updates and reminders with you. Every April, we celebrate Earth Day. Earth Day is an annual celebration that remind us of our responsibility as inhabitants of this beautiful planet to protect, preserve and steward Earth's natural resources. All of us can play a role in championing the Earth through climate advocacy, participation in cleanup campaigns, by investing in sustainable resources and so much more. As we observe Earth Day on April twenty-second, I want to encourage APS staff, students and families. As we observe Earth Day on April twenty-second, I want to encourage APS staff, students, and families to get involved with the Earth Conservation Movement and identify ways you can invest in this planet by visiting earthday.org. The actions we take today will have a profound impact on generations to come. The month of April is also School Library Month, a time dedicated to recognizing the critical role school librarians and media specialists play in teaching and reinforcing literacy skills, developing critical thinking skills, and cultivating a love of reading amongst learners. Every April, the Atlanta Board of Education intentionally acknowledge and celebrates the new library media specialist of the year. And this year, we have the honor of recognizing Lorraine Fushi of Barack and Michelle Obama Academy. Ms. Fushi is a dedicated educator who has over twenty years of experience in education and has served APS since two thousand and fourteen. Her commitment and passion for students of Barack and Michelle Obama Academy has earned her the honor of Support Person of the Year for Barack and Michelle Obama Academy. I want to thank Ms. Fushi for her dedication to impact the lives of students every day and for her faithful service to Atlanta Public Schools. Ms. Fushi, congratulations on being selected as Library Media Specialist of the Year. And to all of our library media specialists, we recognize the important work you do to transform the lives of students. And we thank you for showing up every day to help students meet their learning goals. During the month of April, not only do we acknowledge our school library workers, but throughout the week of April twenty-third through the twenty-ninth, we observe National Library Week when we recognize the many benefits school and public libraries bring to our communities. We see the benefits of libraries manifesting in our own schools. For the fourth year, our district has challenged our students, staff, and community to read and log ten million minutes in our Race to Read Challenge. Together, we have already crossed the finish line for this year. But we're not stopping here. We are continuing to read and log our minutes for this school year. And beginning June first, our summer Race to Read Challenge will begin. Additionally, as part of our April celebration of libraries and library workers, I want to congratulate the top winner of the Ezra Jack Keats Bookmaking Competition, whose work is on display tonight in the CLL lobby. And in case you don't know about this annual competition, the Ezra Jack Keats Bookmaking Competition is an annual competition for aspiring authors and illustrators to create an original picture book. Students write and illustrate their own picture book that reflects their experience and develop their skills. Again, congratulations to all the winners and all of the participants. APS community, join us in our celebration of National School Library Month and National School Library Week by becoming a school library advocate and expressing appreciation and respect for our library workers. While Atlanta Public School was enjoying our annual spring break last week, it was Paraprofessional Appreciation Day on Wednesday, April fifth. We would be remiss if we did not take the time to acknowledge and celebrate our paraprofessionals who do the most important work of supporting our teachers, providing one-on-one support for our students, and aiding in instructional process. I want to encourage our APS communities to express your appreciation to our paraprofessionals this week. Write them a note, give them a card, or do whatever is on your heart to express to them how much you value their work. I want to thank all of our paraprofessionals personally for the contributions you made in the classroom every day and the impact you continue to have on our students and their academic achievement. April first through the seventh was also an annual celebration for the Week of the Young Child. The National Association for Education of Young Children, known as NACI, celebrates early learning, young children, their teachers, and families each year with a Week of Activities and Awareness Post. Search the hashtag W O Y C two-three to see the celebrations happening around your cluster and use it to celebrate early learning. Thank you to our Office of Early Learning and our pre-K educators for all you do to educate our youngest scholars. These are our March updates. Dr. Herring, we are ready to hear from you.
Thank you, Board Member Mitchell. APS family, it's my honor to share this month's community updates with you. Let's get to it. Parents and educators, it's election season. That's right, it's that time of year when you, our families and staff, vote to determine who you think is best suited to make school-based decisions for your school. The Go Team's election allows you to choose who will have decision-making authority over your school's strategic plan, budget approval, school-based solution flexibility requests, and much more. You can vote as early as April eighteenth, when households and school staff will receive a unique voting link through email and text messaging or via a household mailer. The voting period will run through Election Day, which is April twenty-seventh. As with every election, your vote is your voice and your voice matters. So be sure to cast your vote. In just forty-three days, we all gather to witness our outstanding graduating seniors walk across the stage to receive their diplomas. Our commencement ceremonies begin on May twenty-fourth, and I can't wait to celebrate our scholars who have worked hard to reach the graduation milestone. I want to remind everyone that you can access the complete commencement ceremony schedule by visiting www atlantapublicschools.us forward slash grad nation. Attending graduations is a vivid reminder of why we put our feet on the pavement every day to serve students with a high-quality education. I'm looking forward to these four days of celebrations, and I know our APS community is as well. Last week, April third through seventh was National Assistant Principal Appreciation Week. Although we enjoyed a much deserved spring break, we dare not forget to celebrate and appreciate our assistant principals, who work tirelessly to support our teachers, students, and principals, and help foster a positive learning environment for all who walk the halls of our schools. To our APS, we appreciate the work you do every day that seemingly goes unnoticed at times, but we see you and we are grateful for your hard work and your commitment to our schools. I want to encourage our students, staff, and community to take the time this week to show love and appreciation in your own special way to your assistant principals. Their support contributes significantly to the overall success of our schools. The celebration of our outstanding staff will continue on April twenty-sixth, which is National Administrative Professionals Appreciation Day, a day set aside to extend expressions of gratitude to the administrative support staff who help keep our offices running smoothly and efficiently. We celebrate our secretaries, administrative assistants, receptionists, and other administrative support professionals who keep us organized and handle the unexpected and sometimes unrecognized tasks they perform. We know for sure that our administrative professionals are essential to the overall success of our organization. APS staff and community, I encourage you to honor the administrative professionals in our schools and district office by expressing to them your gratitude for the work that they do on a daily basis. While you are taking the time to celebrate our administrative staff, begin thinking of ways to recognize and appreciate our teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week, the week of May eighth through May twelfth. Most, if not all of us, can attest that our lives have been impacted for the better by a teacher at some point along our journey. And although they deserve more than a week, we look forward to offering our thanks to our teachers who work tirelessly to ensure our scholars succeed. I encourage everyone to prepare their hearts to express gratitude to our beloved teachers, our APS teachers. APS family, mark your calendars for April twenty-second, so you don't miss out on all the fun. I can't begin to tell you how excited I am for the APS One-Fiftieth Parade, which will take place on Saturday, April twenty-second, beginning at ten AM. I can't wait to join Board Chair Ishay Collins and Mayor Andre Dickens as we serve as the grand marshals, leading a showcase of floats representing our APS community through the streets of our city in celebration of one hundred fifty years of this history-making school district. We're excited to share this moment with all students, families, communities, and APS alumni, and we invite the entire city to join us. The parade will begin at Carver High School and end at Liquid Stadium. To view the parade route and learn more about our one hundred fiftieth celebrations, please visit our website at www atlantapublicschools.us forward slash one fifty. And please make plans to join us. I want to give a special thanks to the hundreds of parents, that's right, hundreds of parents and families who joined us on Saturday, March twenty-fifth, for our PACE Violence Prevention Event at Mays High School. From the APS Office of Student Services, which organized the event, to the community vendors who hosted breakout sessions and provided resources, and to our mayor himself, who encouraged us with his words and presence, the village came together to take steps toward creating a more safe and supportive environment for our students. I want to give a special thanks to our board members who were also present. And I want to thank our Office of Student Services for taking up the mantle to bring us all together. And the Office of Communications for spreading the word and encouraging families to attend. As a district, we continue to engage on the issue of violence, and we know that we cannot do this work alone. We are committed to doing all we can to ensure the safety and well-being of our students. And we are grateful for every partner who joined us to make certain that our families and our students have what they need to ensure safety and well-being in our communities and inside of our homes. As a reminder, APS has partnered with Hazel Health to offer ongoing mental and physical telehealth services to the students at our traditional schools. Whether it be the COVID nineteen pandemic or the pressures of social media, our students have endured immense challenges that have impacted their physical and mental well-being. APS is committed to providing whole child interventions to our students to ensure they have what they need to be successful. Parents, I encourage you to visit our website to access the parental consent form so that your child can begin receiving services as soon as possible. We had a blast cheering on our student athletes at the annual APS Special Olympics Track and Field Competition on Tuesday, March twenty-first. The talent and skill of our competitors was on full display. And I am bidding with pride because of the fortitude they demonstrated. I want to congratulate all of our participants for being the winners that they are, as well as all of our volunteers, without whom this fantastic event would not be possible. The APS Special Olympics is a striking reminder that there are no limits to what our scholars can achieve when they are encouraged by someone who shows them they love and care.
Here, are we ready? Great, thank you so much. Executive session has ended, and we will now resume the regular meeting of the Atlanta Board of Education. Before we begin our community meeting, I'd like to give the floor to our at-large seat eight representative, Mrs. Cynthia Briscoe Brown, for a special recognition. Cynthia, you now have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, and welcome back, everybody. We hope you had a restful and productive spring break. This past week has been Atlanta Public Schools' spring break, of course, but it's also been a significant week for three of the most prevalent faiths in our city. Holy Week, Passover, and Ramadan give Christians, Jews, and Muslims an opportunity to remember and reflect on how our faith impacts our lives and on how our faith leads us to impact the lives of others in our community. During her first year with Atlanta Public Schools, Superintendent Herring, herself the daughter and sister of pastors, conceived of a wide-ranging, interfaith group of faith leaders who would be interested in increasing their impact within Atlanta Public Schools. We now called this group Theo, Together in Hope, Equity, and Opportunity. And it kicked off on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we, that day was chosen in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who exemplified the intersection of faith and action in a way that we also want this group to. With the involvement of APS Center for Equity and Social Justice and the Office of Partnerships and Development, Theo meets three to four times a year in meaningful and deliberate convenings where faith leaders and educators learn from one another, share their experience of strategic impact throughout the city, engage in collective advocacy, and commit to direct partnership within specific Atlanta Public Schools. Theo has compiled a document detailing all kinds of different religious holidays and practices, which has already had a huge impact on our students, staff, and families as they understand and are sensitive to how faith and life affect each other within a school context. And if you haven't found that yet, it is a fascinating document. Finally, the Policy Review Committee of the Board, which I'm honored to chair, is right now working on a Religious Observances Policy to support expressions of faith in our APS community. This policy is a direct result of the work of Theo in raising our awareness of these issues in addition to our conversations as board members with students during our Breakfast with the Board events. We are looking forward to taking advantage of the broad knowledge and experience within Theo to create a policy which supports students and staff of all faiths as they live them out in their schools and neighborhoods. And so tonight, I'd like to recognize and honor the Theo group for the wonderful work that they have done and are continuing to do in this important space. And I'd like to ask the following representatives of Theo, who are here tonight, to join me at the front. Uh, Reverend Olivia Maxwell from Ebenezer Baptist Church, Reverend Ally Osborne from Second Potsleyan Baptist, uh, Terry Lee from the Cathedral of Faith Church of God in Christ, Calysia Wright from, uh, my personal congregation, First Presbyterian Church of Atlanta, and also Dr. Tahida Baker Jones, our Chief Equity Officer, Katrina Reed, Partnerships Manager, and members of their teams. If.
Thank you so much, Cynthia. And so as you may have noticed through our pre-recorded remarks, which played during, while we were in executive session, this month is also School Library Month, National School Library Week. And we would like to also specially recognize our APS Library Media Specialist of the Year, who is with us tonight, Ms. Lorraine Fouché of the Barack and Michelle Obama Academy. Yes. Ms. Fouché. Ms. Fouchet, please come and join us. Dr. Christian, please join us. Oh, there she is. Congratulations again, Ms. Fouchet, and for everything that you do on behalf of APS and our children. Thank you. And also thank you, thank you, Mrs. Briscoe Brown, and our guests. That was wonderful, and I extend our deepest thanks to the faith-based partners from across Atlanta who has convened in order to strengthen and deepen our collective efforts. Before we proceed into the community meeting, I also would like to take a moment of silence for a few loss that we have, that the APS family has experienced over the break. And oftentimes, always, it's very tough to hear when we lose our own, not only in our school system, but also in our city. And so I want to recognize Bryce Brooks Jr. at Jackson High School, Chuck Johnson, the father of Brandon Johnson, who also attends Maynard Jackson High School, Anton Martin, who was a student at Carver High School, and Michael Jennings, who was the coach, teacher, and alumna of Mays High School. We will now enter a moment of silence to honor these lives that was lost recently. Thank you. And now let's proceed with the community meeting. Mr. Gaither, would you please read the instructions for tonight's meeting?
Good evening and welcome to the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. In just a few moments, the board will begin hearing from those who signed up to speak by 5:50 p.m. The board welcomes your comments, but before we get started, please take note of the following guidelines on how public comment is conducted. The board is allocated one hour for public comment, and each speaker will only be allowed to speak once for a total of two minutes. The board may elect to hear community comments in any order or sequence, and is not limited by the order of the sign-up sheets. All speakers presenting highly detailed information are asked to put their comments, and writing and comment cards are available for those wishing to do so. In order to maintain meeting decorum, follow appropriate protocols, protect the confidentiality of students, and ensure impartiality, the board will not hear comments on matters involving individual students, parents, or the character professional competency or the physical or mental health of any individual. Also, the board will not hear public comment on personnel matters that specifically include the names or titles of employees. This includes, but is not limited to, contract non-renewals, position abolishment, the hiring or firing of staff, and investigative proceedings regarding allegations of misconduct. Comments regarding personnel issues should be sent in writing to Atlanta Board of Education, 130 Trinity Avenue, Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia 30303, or via email at boardcomments@atlantapublicschools.us. Finally, in order to maintain meeting decorum and ensure all comments can be heard by the board, applause, cheering, jeering, or speech that defames individuals or disrupts the meeting should be refrained from and may be called for removal or adjournment of the meeting and/or suspension from attending future Atlanta Board of Education events, hearings, meetings, and other proceedings. With that said, I would like to call our first speaker, Melissa Hughley, for two minutes. Ms. Hughley, can you hear us?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you call me already?
Just now. You have two minutes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't hear. Yeah, I was calling in reference about the meeting earlier, about the curriculum piece. I wanted to talk about the individual learning plans. I think I brought that up a couple of times in a couple of meetings. I think we need to start focusing on that and actually looking into that and start early on with our students, probably in kindergarten. That way, we can actually monitor how our kids are actually learning, and we can actually look at trends and look at those things and determine how our kids are actually accepting the data that they're actually learning. This will eliminate half of the things that we were talking about earlier in these meetings. Secondly, I would like to say thank you, Michelle, for how you spoke up. I do appreciate that. And also, Dr. Herring, I think it was kind of unfair how they actually brought you in to Atlanta. They didn't bring you in under your own premise. They brought you up under someone else's. So I do just want to say that. So I do think that the individual learning plans need to be going into effect. I think we start looking at that. And I would like to say thank you to the board for pausing that zoning. To me, I think that was the best thing y'all have done so far as a board, pausing the zoning. But we do need to look at those contracts with Purposeville. Those contracts need to end, because right now, all of their schools are either Target or Improvement on state lists, and I do think that that contract need to end. So on that note, you all have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mother Mamie Moore for two minutes.
Yes.
Yes, you have two minutes.
Good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity. Again, Mamie Moore, AKA Mother Mamie Moore. I'm a resident of English Avenue for 15 years and a great-grandmother of two students in Hollis Academy. I'm here tonight to speak on the necessity for us to look at the question of school capacity and the movement of actions around redistricting in the context of not just over-capacity schools, but those of schools like ours who have not reached capacity. Unhealthy is over-capacity as well as under-capacity. As a member of the Education Committee of the NPUL, we voted that we want the board to move to open up the discussion of the capacity issue for Hollis and Booker T. Washington in the context of the Washington cluster and the fact that the English Avenue neighborhood is split in half and the examination of that split and what can be done to redistrict us back as a whole, healthy neighborhood, which would enable us to be able to look holistically at the capacity issue of Hollis and Booker T. Washington, which at this time, we are not at our maximum. But in order for us to be healthy and sustainable, we need proactive action from board, as well as parents, as well as our staff, to be able to move a different direction of our school functioning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Brown for two minutes. Mr. Brown, can you hear us? Chris Brown?
Can you hear me?
We can now. You have two minutes.
Got you. Good afternoon. I wanted to come to you as a matter of equity and social justice to request that the Board of Education fund for fiscal year 2023-2024 for each K-12 school, a parent liaison without impacting the school's proposed operational budget for family engagement. This would allow for better connectivity to our communities and our NPUs for better engagement for issues that we deem necessary. It would help for parent participation and help fill those gaps for continued support. Schools should be allowed to fund additional engagement specialists for additional support and use those funds and/or use those funds for engagement-related expenses and/or training. This is a policy that the board can adopt to help further this engagement. We know we're short-staffed in terms of how board members engage in their respective districts, but this would also allow us to kind of build a family and more of a community within the communities, within our educational system. As that you support and give considerations, I'm here to give any additional input and support. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Don Brockington Shaw for two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes.
All right. Perfect, thanks. Karoshi is the Japanese term used to describe the physical and mental decline faced by workers that are subjected to toxic work environments. The direct translation for karoshi is death from overwork. South Korea and China have their own terms to describe death from overwork. In the U.S., we don't have a name for karoshi, but we are experiencing the symptoms. The stress from workplace bullying manifests in employees as mental distress, absenteeism, anxiety, panic attacks, clinical depression, physical health problems, repeat physical sickness, and ultimately death. The toxic work environment at Mays High School has contributed to three deaths. The current administration and Atlanta Board of Education was warned multiple times that the environment at Mays was unbearable. The disrespect by the Mays administration was continued by the poor planning effort to ensure all employees and students that wanted to celebrate the life were able to do so with ease. I sent an email asking for those in power to be held accountable. Thank you, Dr. Herring, for responding. The email was also sent to the entire board. Board Chair Collins, please hold your employee accountable. Ensure that action is taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Davis, followed by Sherri Bilow. Ms. Bilow, if you'll make your way up to the front, that'd be greatly appreciated. And I'm sorry, Lauren Davis is first. Ms. Bilow? Lauren Davis will go first. I just want to make sure that you're in the queue. But you were ready. Two minutes, Ms. Davis.
Hello, my name is Lauren, and I work with Atlanta Thrive. And for the past year, I've been going to IEP meetings as an advocate for the parents of APS. And by sitting in those meetings, I learned that the staff members that orchestrate the meetings don't know how to properly orchestrate the meetings. With that being said, when I come in there, it just amazes me how we have to be in there to speak for parents and because they don't understand what the process is for the IEP and how to get their kids the needs that they need. I've learned about tapestry over the past year, and they offer a visualized, innovative, and inclusive learning space. The kids are able to be in a comfortable learning space when they're learning, meaning they have a couch in every classroom, a podium, and they have a meter in the classroom where it tells you if the class is too loud, they can turn the meter down. They also have an activity room if the kids want to step out and, you know, take a break from the learning space. They also have a sensory room. And I feel like if we bring tapestry to Atlanta Public Schools, it will help a lot among the kids. And yes, I just feel like we should have tapestry.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Bilow, followed by Sabrina Autry. Ms. Autry, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated. Ms. Bilow?
Okay. Hailing to the APS Board of Education, I am Sherri Bilow, Go Teens Vice Chair of Hollis Innovation Academy, NPUL Educational Chair. A super cheer of parent on a mission to ensure that APS place the rightful resource into the book to Washington High School. First, I want to say, rezoning of Midtown High School being off the table is not equity. Midtown High School is already overcrowded, and it's time to invest the dollars into Washington High School. Equity is making all the cluster public school have an adequate balance. It's not a divide between Midtown and Washington. It's simple. Invest part of APS $1.4 billion budget into schools like Washington so families will want to send their kids there. We need resources to be able to compete and bring people into our cluster. The Washington cluster is a first STEM-certified cluster in APS. I want the APS Board and other parents' community to know Washington is a destination for learning. Give us the resources, we can do it. And yes, modest community parents like me have kids that graduated out of Washington High School. Remember, equity is making a balance, having scholars understand their worth, school pride, and putting the right investments into public schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Autry, followed by Kimberly Dukes. Ms. Autry, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you for your time. My name is Sabrina. I have a son. I have two children that attend different schools within Atlanta Public Schools. I'm new to Georgia. I just moved here from California a year ago. Before transferring to Atlanta Public Schools, we were in D.CAB school district. And I just want to say that my experience from D.CAB to Atlanta Public Schools has been really, really different. And I'm here hoping for a better day, okay? So let me start off with that. I've been struggling since coming to Atlanta Public Schools. I'm noticing a lot of hyperpolicing. That's been my experience on my daughter's fourth tardy, which was in the first week of school. I was starting with legal action. Since trying to get her 504 in place and get my son's IEP situated with our move-in IEP, which still has not been held to this day, I have experienced a lot of retaliation, a lot of social workers calling, a lot of investigative work, but not really a lot of resources, not a lot of help in my regard. So I have sent emails out. I sent an email out to the Social Justice and Equities Department back in January after removing my children from school attempting to do a homeschool program, which I did not like, and then put them back in school, which at that time, I had the police called on me at the school. I've been told that I was evading social workers' investigations when my children were at home sick with coronavirus. There's just been a lot of different things going on. Right now, I'm concerned with his IEP being neglected and his services not being implemented within the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Dukes, followed by Gaye Caraway. Gaye Caraway, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Good afternoon, Dr. Herring and board members. My goal this year is to highlight the Special Education Department in Atlanta Public Schools. Our kids are struggling in that space. I've been coming to you guys, talking to you about the social workers and the kids in the IEP space because they are directly aligned. When parents are approaching the schools asking for these services, we are retaliated against. We are shown a lot of fear, and it is very unwelcoming. That's why we supported Guard Rail Number Three. Also, that's why we support the tapestry, because it's so hard for families to come together and sit around these tables as a team to get exactly what we need for our children. Also, when you have schools and they are not, not only are they not staffed, but we don't have the classes for our children. We're basically making stuff happen just to say we are graduating kids into the grave and into the streets. So we have to get education right, especially special education in APS. If we get special education right, general education will be great. It's hard when parents like me have to send my child to Knoxville, Tennessee, because Washington could not service them, right? But I have another child that says Washington, and they're doing very well with him. So that's how I know that it takes different spaces for different children to thrive. So I want to push the board to get to a innovative space of thinking when we're thinking about educating kids because our traditional spaces, they are not the expert at educating our kids in the special education space. You're going to hear from a couple of parents tonight speaking on special education, and if you do not know, it is a neglect to education when you're not giving our kids their services. I continue to come. It's not my first week, not my first month. I've been doing this for years, Dr. Herring. As soon as you hit the door, I've been telling you to fix the special education space. So you have a chance tonight to pilot the Tapestry Program. And so I look at all of you, including you, Michelle, because you have a baby in the in a space that can actually thrive. So thinking about your child and thinking about the kids in APS, make sure you do what's right for our baby and think about tapestry.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gaye Caraway, followed by Diego Caraway for two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Chesia Caraway, and I am a parent of a student attending Tapestry in Decap County. I am here to introduce you to my son, to introduce you to someone who is neurodivergent, which is meaning that he learns differently, he responds and processes information differently than what would be considered typical. He has been attending Tapestry for since the sixth grade, and I want to introduce you to the young man who will be graduating this year with a 3.8 grade point average, who is also attending Overthorpe University on a Presidential Scholarship studying physics and engineering. And I wanted to introduce to you what a good school who handles differences can create. This is Diego Caraway Van Gundy.
I'm sorry. I know. I just want to make sure that we wrapped up your speech. All right. Awesome. Thank you. Diego, you have two minutes.
All right. Thank you. So at a young age, at a young age, I was diagnosed with ADHD, autism, ADD. And my parents did their best to help me understand what this what this special thing that I had was. However, it wasn't until I got to Tapestry when I truly understood what it was, that it wasn't a hindrance, it was a superpower, and one that'll and one that would help me with my education. And it has helped my education. And it's helped me to the point where I'll finally be, well, the point where I'll be going to Overthorpe in the fall. And so I encourage you to make more schools like the one, like Tapestry, to help other kids learn their passions and to be able to understand their disability and to help them reach the level that I am currently at, if not higher. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kimberly Brooks for two minutes, followed by Kingston Willingham. Kingston Willingham, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Good morning, afternoon. So first of all, I'd like to say that this is an opportunity for the council after we have decided to freeze the zoning for this county, this, no, that's City Council meeting, the Board of Education to make a change in our system. So what we're seeing with a lot of individuals that come here is I'm looking at the reallocation of funds and how you use the funding and spending that you have in the African-American community and the Black communities and the less affluent communities versus those of the North. So I've been in Atlanta Public Schools for, we're not going to say, but the 1980s. With that being said, education was always an option as I went to Frederick Douglass High School, but I additionally went to Manay Jackson High School through the Magna Program. I actually went to Douglass High School. As far as special education was concerned, I think that was under a different administration for the federal government that health, that mental health services were fully funded under, in each school. So exclusionary education for individuals that had challenges, they learned in the same school. So as we see this opportunity after COVID, the Board of Education should be tasked with two things, finding the kids that were lost during COVID. I realize a lot of kids have not returned back to school. This could impact your enrollment rates, making the communities whole that have been divided by charter schools or rezoning or unnecessary actions, political actions to divide African-American communities specifically and I guess less affluent communities, and make those communities whole again. Fully fund teachers, social workers, and individuals that work in the social web around services of schools because this is what is needed. If you do that first, all of the problems that we hear will be alleviated because every school will be fully funded with the services that they need and equity will be truly resolved because you allocate the funds the way you're supposed to do so. Right now, I'm seeing you choose programs and choose this area and choose that area when you should just look at what equity is because I'm hearing a lot of people in specific communities of race, which I think is just racist, for them not to have the services and funding that they needed. So I'm hoping to use this opportunity to properly fund the proper areas that you need to fund. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kingston Willingham, followed by Angel Willingham. Ms. Willingham, if you make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated. Mr. Willingham, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Kingston. I am a student of Tapestry Public Charter School. And I believe that we should have more schools like Tapestry in the Atlanta Public School System because students with autism, ADHD, other learning impairments, disabilities should have the opportunity to take higher-level classes and graduate more consistently than they do instead of dropping out because of the difficulties with their classes. And Tapestry has helped me personally because I play varsity sports, which is an opportunity I wouldn't have if I went to, let's say, Lakeside, popular Decap County school. I also take AP classes as a sophomore. It's something that I feel certainly wouldn't be able to do at any other school because I would be struggling to do my own work because my IEP probably wouldn't be able to be followed. I feel like the teacher-student connection at Tapestry is different than anywhere else because of our class sizes. And it is, we know our teachers on a personal level. So we joke around with them, but we got our work done, obviously. I like we have two activity rooms for if we are stressed. We have plans in place for if we can't focus. It helps us a lot throughout the day. I've seen those used many, many times. Sorry, I'm out of touch.
Ms. Willingham, you have two minutes, followed by Jeretta Dotson. Ms. Dotson, if you make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angel Willingham, and I am parent to that amazing kid you just saw. I am often asked why Tapestry. And one of the things that I say most often is why not Tapestry? Tapestry is a place that I was looking for when I was trying to transition my son from sitting in a psychologist's office telling me all of the things that he wasn't going to be able to do because his IEP, because of his autism and because of his ADHD and because of his math processing delays. And then I found Tapestry, and we went and he started there, and it was like an entirely new world opened up for him. He made friends that thought like him, which I don't know if you know what it's like to be a parent of an autistic kid, but especially a parent of a Black autistic kid, who don't typically meet other Black autistic students. And we never knew any until he went to Tapestry. And so he got to make friends that looked like him and thought like him and reasoned like him, and he wasn't othered in the ways that he was in his elementary school. He wasn't pulled out of his class. So like he told you, he takes AP courses. He doesn't take AP courses as a special education class. He takes AP courses with his other student, with his other classmates. So he's in his AP courses with his 11th and 12th grade peers, not his autistic or his special education peers. They're all in classes together. And so they learn together, which I think is also really important to our neurotypical kids because it helps them understand how to operate in a world where everyone doesn't think like them and everyone doesn't reason like them, and it teaches them how to be more compassionate and more understanding. And I think that's really an important thing that we need to kind of move also into APS.
Our next speaker is Jeretta Dotson, followed by Valerie Williams. Ms. Williams, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated. Ms. Dotson, you have two minutes.
So I am a teacher in the North Cluster at Sarah Smith Elementary School. Most of you know my face. And here's Mr. Madden Dotson. I am a product of this fine district. How appropriate on our start of this meeting tonight because I have a question. What would Jesus do? He would definitely show up, and I'm showing up again and again because teachers are human and they have voice, and that voice should be respected. It is enough that teachers across the nation are sacrificing their lives within classrooms and across districts, but to also be unnecessarily at odds with their districts in which they work is simply gross, messy, and unprofessional business. I am here as a teacher within our district APS because APS needs to be called to action. You guys begged me by your actions to come to this very spot. I wouldn't be in this spot were it not for your begging by your actions. I'm standing to call you to action to do what is right when you could choose to do what's wrong. Again, what would Jesus do? This is about honoring words. This is about making agreeable resolution and corrections when it has caused personal harm to those who are the heartbeat of education. Just think if you didn't have a heartbeat, then you'd just be functioning as nothing. Teachers are the heartbeat of education. Please honor our teachers with actions that are honorable. And that's what I'm going to say. Have a great day. What would Jesus do?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Valerie Williams for two minutes, followed by Sharifa Jackson. Sharifa Jackson, if you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Good afternoon, Board and Dr. Harrington. To quote the famous Langston Hughes, "America has never been America to me." Well, APS has never been APS to us. Let APS be APS again. Let it be, let it be the dream that it used to be. Let it be the pioneer of the plan seeking a home where he himself is free. APS has never been APS to us. Let APS be the dream, the dream that dreamers dream. Let it be that great, strong land of love where never kings connive nor tyrants scheme. That any man be crushed by one above. APS has never been APS to us. When APS took rezoning off the table and continued not to put on the table a plan to resource Booker T. Washington High School, APS has never been APS to us. When you say, Dr. Harrington, that you've heard the voice of the Midtown student, yet you never went to the students of Booker T. Washington High School, APS has never been APS to us. So we ask, in order for Washington High School to become the place where parents want to bring, send their kids and kids want to learn, please resource Washington as you promised Midtown because APS has never been APS to us. So when you come to our communities and you speak of the things that you say you don't know, APS has never been APS to you, APS to us. So we ask you, Madam Chair and Madam Co-Chair, about the contracts that we want to see of Dr. Harrington on the next, at the next board member on the agenda. That's just not Valerie Williams. That, as of today, is 1,186 signatures.
Our next speaker is Sharifa Jackson for two minutes, followed by Viola Matias. Ms. Matias, if you make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated. Ms. Jackson, you have two minutes.
Good afternoon. The mission of Tapestry Public Charter School is to offer an inclusive, individualized learning environment that is academically engaging both for neurotypical students and those with autism spectrum, on the autism spectrum, and to create a positive school culture that empowers all students to take possession of their innate talents and become creative builders of their own future. With everything that we are learning and dealing with in this country today, this is what education should look like. I am a current, involved APS parent and the education chair for MPUT. I, as well as MPUT, approve of Tapestry's replication in APS. I have toured the school, interviewed members of the board, and the administration, employees, and students. Everything that I saw and heard made me feel excited about the possibility of this school being a part of the APS community. It is a unique opportunity to provide children with and without special needs, an environment that fosters growth that I haven't witnessed to this level anywhere else. Not only are they transcending norms with the children that have special needs, but they are also doing so with regards to equity issues than when it comes to race and income. They received the Access and Equity Award for the last two years from Decap County for increasing the amount of socially and economically disadvantaged students that take APS classes, AP classes, something that some of the most sought-after schools in APS is struggling with. They offer things like splintering, which allows students to be gifted in one or more subjects while still needing remediation in another. They also offer individual education plans to each child and are able to use the skills that they use to educate children with special needs in every classroom because all classes are co-taught with the general education and special education teacher. In addition, they are not seeking to prioritize any area
I'm sorry, we've reached a time boundary. Thank you. Our next speaker is Viola Matias for two minutes, followed by Akeem Williams for two minutes. Mr. Williams, if you'll make your way up to the front.
Hello, all. This is my first time being here to speak up as to what's been taking place within our school system. I have two beautiful sons that are 10 and 12, and we are in District Four, however. But what I would like to address is about this IEP that has been taking place. We were in a different district, and I had to move to another area to make sure that my son got what he needed and deserved as an individual. Just because you have autism does not mean that you are lesser than. But somehow, when I come into these classes with these teachers who are given this IEP specifically catered to my child's needs. I didn't want to yell. Can I get my two minutes again? But what I'm basically trying to get to is that you all are setting up these teachers to teach our children, but their stress is the caseload. If they're saying, oh, 25 students per class, this is where they are. But what I want you to do or to consider is that each child has their own strengths and weaknesses, and you need to start taking that into account. Because if we have to go to a whole charter or put our children in a charter school to get the necessary rooms, a couch, a sound, something that can promote their growth, it's like, why can't we do this already? Why has it not already been implemented? Us as adults, we're already reading, right? We read, we comprehend. This is a big issue that's going on in the system right now, the reading and comprehending, the language arts. It's like cater to each child's need. Continuously put an environment that helps them to thrive because after they're out of APS, they're going to be working with you all or with your grandchildren, your nieces, nephews, whoever. And guess what? Who's going to be to blame when they're not being successful adults? It's you all because you are the ones who can make change. So please do.
Our next speaker is Akeem Williams for two minutes, followed by Antonio Mals. Mr. Mals, if you make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated. Mr. Williams, you have two minutes.
How y'all doing? Greetings, board members, duly elected officials. I love to see all y'all here today. I mean, it looks great. I hope y'all enjoyed y'all's spring break. All right, now we got this good stuff out. I'm speaking from a place of concern in regards to the hostile work environments throughout this district. It has been run by Dr. Herring and her regime. This regime is out of control. It is causing heartache and suffering to my community, the Mays Cluster. As you all know, the passing of Mr. Mike Jennings was over the weekend, but we have a principal that has contributed to three employees' deaths. And they're still inside that building for what reason we don't know. The emotional, physical, the emotional, physical, and and mental well-being of staff should be your top priority. What I mean by that, if a employee is not feeling good and they have sick time, you should allow them to take it. You all need to do what's right as board members and, you know, bring that agenda to the board, the forefront, before election time. to the board, the forefront, before election time. We elect you all, people that look just like us, that go through the same things that we go through, that live in our communities, to hurt and grieve with us. We need y'all to do what's right and take action. We're tired of this loophole or this stuff being passed back down to somebody else to can ban kick down the road. We're tired of it. We need y'all to do what's right by our constituents, our customer, which is the child. When we look at the recent PSAT data, it suggests that our scholars are struggling to compete nationally amongst their peers. The literacy scores and numeracy scores, they scare me. It's ludicrous. I stand in lockstep with Midtown Cluster and constituents as they did not want your regime to fail them by sending them to a high school that doesn't perform as duly as well as the high school that they're supposed to be going to. That would have changed those children's lives in ways that you probably couldn't even imagine. Do what's right and fire Dr. Herring.
Our next speaker is Antonio Mals for two minutes, followed by Tim Langen. Mr. Langen, if you make your way up to the front, be greatly appreciated. Mr. Mals, you have two minutes.
Good evening. Okay, so I was in here earlier, and I have a few concerns with what you guys were saying. So about the charter schools, I feel like it needs to be more programs in place to help parents and charter and partner schools learn how to read data. And programs like Atlanta Thrive, I'm one of the service team members, we can help out with that. And also, parent engagement, there also needs to be more parent engagement in the community also. And I actually do have, I have high functional autism, and I am a product, a semi-product of APS schools. I feel like there's no reason it should have taken me all the way to college to figure out that I had a learning disorder. I want to keep it short and sweet.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Tim Langen for two minutes, followed by Valencia Wright. Ms. Wright, if you make your way up to the front, be greatly appreciated. Oh, I'm sorry, she's on Zoom, so we'll follow up.
Hi, I'm Tim Langen. I am an 18-year-involved parent and volunteer in Atlanta Public Schools, and I have 15 more left. Beat that in this room. My kids have done years in trailers, annexes, and overcrowded schools in Atlanta Public Schools. I could replay it all. I've been in rezoning meetings with half this room. You know, years ago, when Midtown High would be finished with the expansion, it'd be overcrowded. We shouldn't be left flat-footed. We all knew what was happening, right? I just got turned off. Yet the recommendation is to have Midtown be overcrowded two years from now, right? We knew it, right? We are very much in the same situation we were in 2012. Some of us were in those meetings. People fought tooth and nail to not be zoned to Maynard Jackson High School south of DeKalb Avenue. The meetings were ugly, and APS showed some backbone and some spirit, invested into the Maynard Jackson Cluster, and it's been a success. We all have challenges. I'm not minimizing challenges, right? They're a victim of their own success at this point with some capacity to be looked at. We're very much at that same situation. And if we would go all in at Washington High School, we've hired a dynamic leader there, the amount of investment happening west of the downtown connector is unbelievable, something we never thought we would see in Atlanta, Georgia. I went to Georgia Tech. You didn't travel west of Northside Parkway. And now it's the hottest area in Atlanta. We have the opportunity to do something wonderful, and it's absurd to think that we're going to have 35 kids in a clash at Midtown High School in a couple of years. And we didn't just hear one theme of feedback that was insulting.
Our next speaker will be Valencia Wright for two minutes. Ms. Wright, can you hear us?
Hello.
Yes, you have two minutes.
Good afternoon. I just want to say I'm a 34th single parent of a ninth grader. My personal issue is I've been going through a lot of bullying, but with the help of Atlanta Thrive, I've been trying to get more justice, and they've been helping me advocate. My thing is, I had to go through a hardship just to get my son out of the school that he was bullied to the point that I just- So my main concern is, I want to understand is, why do I have to continue to keep doing a hardship every semester when my son was having problems at one particular school? You know, I have a son that's in IEP too, you know? That made it to the point that I had to put him in therapy because he's going through emotional anxiety through one school to the point that I had to get on the news. And my main concern is, why do I have to keep doing a hardship if he don't made it to the school where he's finally feeling comfortable? And then I have to worry about if he's going to still be accepted in his one school after he don't got in this school, made the grades, finally feel safe and secure? And every semester or every year, I got to constantly do a hardship when they know my concern? I've been back and forth to the APS school with Atlanta Thrive, reaching out on the news. You know, I'm a single parent of one. You know, suicide is a lot, and I refuse to lose my son against the APS school system because I constantly got to keep going up there about an issue that already been known about. That's the biggest concern. If he's already in the school where he don't build friends and learn his teacher, why do I have to continue to do a hardship if they already know what I've been going through? They got emails, they don't see the news, you know? I have one son. I'm all he got, he's all I got. I don't want to lose my son against the school system doing bullying. I don't want him to go back to a school where he don't constantly have problems about. The school knows him for this and that.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. I'm sorry, we reached a time boundary. I will say that if you have additional comments, please feel free to submit those in writing. You can do that by using our List Talk portal.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gaither. Thank you so much, community members, for taking the time to speak with us this evening. As always, we appreciate your feedback and your engagement with us. I want to note that our prerecorded remarks, which played while the board was in executive session, can also be found on the APS TV YouTube channel for your reference. This month's remarks were narrated by our representative from District Five, Board Member Erica Mitchell. Thank you so much, Erica. Board Member Mitchell highlighted this month's celebrations and activities, including Earth Day, Paraprofessional Appreciation Day, again, School Library Month, National School Board Library Week, and again, the recognition of our APS Library Media Specialist of the Year, Ms. Lorraine Fouché of Barack and Michelle Obama Academy. And of course, this month's celebration and activities include the Week of the Young Child. I would like to add that in addition to our regular board meeting for the month of May, which will occur on Monday, May 1st, we also are holding a special board meeting for student recognitions that will be held on the following Monday, May 8th, at 5:30 PM, right here in the boardroom. Please mark your calendars, and it's our hope that you can join us. I am so happy that we are able to hold this event in person again after a pandemic hiatus. Community members, you'll be able to watch the event livestream online. Students and families will receive information from your principal if you're invited to be recognized this year. Also, Dr. Harrington, I know you're going to mention our 150th Parade, which is happening in just a couple of weeks, on Saturday, April 22nd. I would like to say to everyone that if you are a group or partner affiliated with APS, you can still sign up through this Friday to participate in the parade. So please visit www atlantapublicschools.us/150 and click on the Signature Events tab to find the parade information and registration form. And so now, Dr. Harrington, we are ready to hear your updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I want to provide a brief recap of our work session reports from earlier today. We heard three presentations. For our first presentation, we heard a Charter and Partner Schools update from Matt Underwood, Executive Director of the Office of Charter and Partner Schools. Mr. Underwood provided background on the purpose and initiatives of the Office of Charter and Partner Schools, as well as key data and monitoring information about the district's charter and partner schools. Under the new performance monitoring framework developed by the Office of Charter and Partner Schools, some schools did not meet all standards in school year '21 and will need improved performance and will need improved performance in school year '22, '23 to avoid potential consequences. Many schools met all standards, and the number of students seeking to enroll in APS Charter School continues to be higher than the available space. For our second presentation, we heard the monthly financial report from Lisa Bracken, our Chief Financial Officer. Ms. Bracken provided information regarding current district financials with expenditures, updates, requested budget adjustments, and a review of the fiscal year 2024 revenue. And then our third final presentation, we focused on our ninth monthly Student Outcomes Focused Governance, or SOFG, discussion. Today's progress monitoring report was on our Goal Three. Goal Three is post-graduation preparedness, and it focuses on identifying the percentage of high school students who graduate prepared for their next step as demonstrated on a multi-dimensional assessment that can be progress monitored, which is called the profile of a graduate. Goal Three states, the percentage of high school students who graduate prepared for their next step as demonstrated on a multi-dimensional assessment based on the profile of a graduate will increase from 72% in May 2022 to Y% to be determined in May of 2026. I provided some historical context around the profile of a graduate in order to frame our discussion. Then we walked through each of the profile of a graduate characteristic definitions and metrics used to measure each characteristic. We believe the profile characteristics are critical skills for engaged citizenship, successful career paths beyond high school, and meaningful community involvement. We are excited to explore how each of the profile characteristics will be demonstrated at different grade levels in future reports. Given the number of initiatives in place to support post-secondary preparedness, we believe we are on track to meet our school year '25, '26 goal. This status will be reevaluated at the conclusion of the '22, '23 school year when we have the ability to compare data from the current 12th grade students to the prior year 12th grade students. APS will need board support in the following areas. Support in sharing the vision of the profile of a graduate with community members. Willingness to explore additional indicators of the profile of a graduate characteristics, and time. Time to refine metrics to ensure the profile of a graduate at lower grade levels. In my prerecorded remarks this month, I reminded the community about our 2023 graduation schedule, our Hazel Health Student Telehealth Services, the importance of the upcoming Go Teams elections, National Assistant Principal Appreciation Week, Administrative Professionals Appreciation Day, and I reminded everyone to plan for teacher appreciation next month. Also, I invited everyone to join us on Saturday, as you mentioned, Board Chairwoman, April 22nd, for the APS 150th Parade. The parade will begin at Carver High School and end at Lakewood Stadium. To view the parade route and learn more about our 150th celebrations, please visit our website, www atlantapublicschools.us/150. Finally, I recapped two wonderful events we held within the past month. The annual APS Special Olympics Track and Field Competition and the PACE Violence Prevention Event, where hundreds of partners, parents, staff, and other stakeholders came together to take steps towards creating a more safe and supportive environment for our students. And I want to appreciate our team and our staff members who were critical in making certain that both our APS Olympics Track and Field Competition and our first-ever PACE Violence Prevention Event were not only successful, but most importantly, meaningful to our children and to our families. As Chairwoman Collins stated, please visit the APS TV YouTube channel to see and hear this month's community updates. And finally, I want to take a moment to thank the City of Atlanta and Mayor Dickens for the honor of speaking at the annual state of the city a few weeks ago, where our children and members of our community have the opportunity to be celebrated and highlighted in partnership with work between the city, of course, and of course, Atlanta Public Schools, and most importantly, in celebration of year of youth. Madam Chairwoman, this concludes my remarks for this evening.
Great, thank you so much, Dr. Harrington. Would you please now, would you please present the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Madam Chair and members of the board, I am committed and pleased to submit Consent Agenda Items 5.1A through 5.4C. I would like to call out the following items on this evening's consent agenda. Item 5.3-G, this contract will allow Quality Care for Childcare, a statewide nonprofit organization, to distribute approximately 165 childcare scholarships per year to eligible Atlanta Public Schools employees with the goal of increasing enrollment with quality-rated care providers for families within the city of Atlanta. I want to name that this is an innovative initiative that has been championed by the Office of Early Learning in partnership with the Department of Human Resources to enhance employee support and retention while also strengthening early education and access for children and families. The district will offer gap-closing scholarships, which will go to qualifying critical employees, which will make childcare more accessible, support employees' financial stability, and enhance retention. As I mentioned earlier, this is 165 scholarships per year, which will lead to 450 children being served for classified employees that meet specific criteria. That includes paraprofessionals, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, et cetera. These are 12-month scholarships with annual extensions for qualifying children, and scholarships will be for children in childcare for pre-K or after school. And of course, this is target quality-rated care, which is oftentimes, sometimes a challenge. We want to also name that for us in Atlanta Public Schools, this is in partnership with the effort to comply with the city or to complement with the city with our early childhood initiative as identified earlier. I think that this evening, we may have some additional partners with Gears and PACT and other entities who are a part of this initiative. If you are in, if you would stand, so that we could also recognize you this evening in your presence, Gears, PACT, and QCC. So thank you in this effort. We are excited about what this means, not just for our smallest learners, but for our families who are APS families and our joint investment in this endeavor. APS has consistently been invested in the quality and the care of early learning, and this is our continued testament to just that. Item 5-4-A, this authorization is for APS to lease three small parcels of the former Anderson Park Elementary Facility to Historic Hills Community Development Corporation for a community garden. With that, Madam Chairwoman, I present Consent Agenda Items 5.1-A through 5.4-C to the board for approval.
Great, thank you so much. It's so exciting, excited about item 5.3-G. A special shout-out to Ellen Cochran with Quality Care for Children. Good to see you. With that being said, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items 5.1A through 5.4C?
So moved, second.
These are properly moved by Jennifer McDonald, second by, how do I say, Aretha Mitchell, by Erica Mitchell. Just a little remix there, by Erica, seconded by Erica Mitchell. We will now open it for a vote. We will now open it for a vote. Is it more appropriate for us to just take a verbal vote for now? Thank you.
I'm sorry, Herschel, can you display the vote?
Mine is not coming up. I'm a yes. Thank you. I will now open up for discussion on Agenda Item 6.1, which is the Monthly Budget Adjustment. Are there any questions, feedback on the monthly budget adjustment? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve Item 6.1, the Monthly Budget Adjustment?
So moved.
Okay. It's been properly moved by Erica Mitchell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Cynthia Briscoe Brown. We will now open for a vote. Thank you. All right, I will now open up for a discussion on Agenda Item 7.1, the resolutions, the Board Resolution Supporting National School Library Month for 2023. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
They have been properly moved by Jennifer McDonald, seconded by Cynthia Briscoe Brown.
We'll say that together next time.
I know. Just heard both. Cynthia Briscoe Brown. Recorded. Yes. Thank you. All right, Madam General Counsel, is there a need for the Board to report out from executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair, the Board needs to take action on four items. For Student Appeal 2023-11, I request a motion that the Atlanta Board of Education uphold the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations.
So moved.
Right, is there officially stated for the record? Is there a motion to approve? Student, is there a motion to approve Student Appeal 2023-11 to uphold to uphold the hearing officer's recommendation? Findings, facts, and recommendations. Thank you, Nina. Okay, it's been properly moved by Aretha Balden, seconded by Jennifer McDonald. We will now open it up for a vote.
For Student Appeal 2023-12, I request a motion that the Atlanta Board of Education uphold the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Student Appeal 2023-12 to uphold the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations?
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Cynthia Briscoe Brown. May I have a, is there a second? It's been properly seconded by Jessica Johnson. We will now open it for a vote.
In Student Appeal 2023-13, I request a motion that the Atlanta Board of Education uphold the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations.
Is there a motion, is there a motion to uphold? Yeah, for the record, please. Is there a motion to uphold the hearing off, excuse me, is there a motion to approve Student Appeal 2023-13 to uphold the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendation? It has been yes, been properly moved by Tamara Jones. It has been properly seconded by Jennifer McDonald. Let's now open it up for a vote.
Okay, last one. We're in the home stretch. For Student Appeal 2023-14, I request a motion that the Atlanta Board of Education uphold the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations.
All right, is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve Student Appeal 2023-14 to uphold the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations?
So moved.
Okay, properly moved by Cynthia Briscoe Brown. Is there a second? Seconded by Aretha Balden. We will now open it for a vote. Thank you so much. Now, we have a few recommendations and announcements of appointments that need to be made at tonight's meeting. Dr. Heron, I will now turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board Chairwoman. I am pleased to recommend the appointments of three principals to fill roles at Beecher Hills Elementary, Hope Hill Elementary, and Long Middle School. Dr. Tiffany N. Franklin has been selected as the principal of Beecher Hills Elementary School. I believe Dr. Franklin is here with us this evening. For the past six years, Dr. Franklin has served the Beecher Hills community as the assistant principal and the leader in Atlanta Public Schools. We are happy to honor and recognize her this evening for her appointment. Ms. Keisha Givens will be recommended as the next principal of Hope Hill Elementary School. Her start date will begin effective in July. Ms. Givens served the Scholars of Atlanta Public Schools for over 20 years and has experience as a classroom teacher, instructional technology specialist, curriculum teacher, and previously served as principal of Loboitt Elementary School from 2009 to 2015. And Mrs. Carla McCall McCoo has been selected as the next principal of Crawford W. Long Middle School. She has been, she has served as the assistant principal at Long Middle School for the past three years. And previously, she served as the school's instructional math coach and as a math teacher and has been long-serving here in Atlanta Public Schools. It is my honor to identify, if all three would stand, and recognize these three individuals as new leaders. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Congratulations. Yeah, I know there's going to be celebrations that'll be happening as we enter May, the month of May, but also want to appreciate the principals that are also leaving. I know Principal Hill is here, the former Principal Croft. Yes.
Let's recognize Lisa. How many years, Lisa? About Principal Hill, that's been how many years?
How many years is Principal? Twelve years as Principal Long. And then we also have Crystal. I don't think, I don't see Principal Jones. Principal Jones at Beecher Hills.
And then also Principal Wheeler from Hope Hill. I don't know if she's here this evening. But we do want to recognize them for their longstanding service to Atlanta Public Schools and to our children. So, thank you, and we are excited for the new seasons for all of our leaders. Thank you for the opportunity to acknowledge them this evening.
Yes. That's how you pass the torch. I love it. I love it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. And then we also have a couple appointments to make on the board, on the board side. Starting with, and then Erica, I'll turn it over to you. As you all may know, we honored and celebrated the amazing legacy and grieved on the passing of Tommy, of Tommy Deutsch. But also, what has come from the community is also the work and his commitment to Best Academy, renaming the school, renaming the school in his honor. And so, we have Board Policy EDC that authorizes the Board to actually start into that process of renaming Best Academy. And that starts with, that starts with renaming the, excuse me, naming the renaming committee. My colleague, Board Member Erica Mitchell, is leading that renaming committee. And so, from her great outreach, this is, this is a great committee. We will be naming Kenny Hill, who's a community partner in the area, Principal Timothy Jones, the Principal of Best Academy, Dustin Hillis, the councilman, councilman for the area, Andrew Anderson, the NPUG Chair, Ambassador Andrew Young, Jewel Grubbs, and John Hope Bryan as the partner with Operation Hope, who will serve on the renaming committee for the potential renaming of Best Academy. Board Member Mitchell, would you like to add anything else in great leadership in bringing this group together?
Thank you, Chairwoman Collins. I just want to take a minute to acknowledge how important to me with the support of the 100 Black Men and legacy lives on in the school and their mission to, their mission and their theme is what they see is what they will be, and setting that example. And so, I think this is the correct way to honor Mr. Deutsch for his long commitment to Atlanta Public Schools, and I will say since 1986. But also, his support through the 100 Black Men to support not just APS, but schools across the country and the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll be looking forward to what work comes from the committee. And please don't hesitate to let us know how we can help and support. Thank you. The next is our Equity Task Force, where we have two vacant, where there was two vacancies on the task force. We will be appointing Stephanie Flowers, who serves as a community leader and Carver parent on the task force, and Andrea Miller, who is the Signature Program Instructional Coach in the South Atlanta Cluster that currently is at South Atlanta High School, who will serve in those two vacancies. Want to also acknowledge them as well for their leadership. And Andrea Miller will actually be a current educator on the task force. That was a space and voice that we didn't have. And so, we have a active APS educator, teacher and educator on, serving on the Equity Task Force. The next, the next role, I guess, roll-off that we will have is with the Invest Atlanta Board that was previously held by Board Member Michelle Olympiades. That term has come to, come to an end. And we will, I will now be appointing Jennifer McDonald to serve as the new APS appointee and representative on the Invest Atlanta Board. Thank you so much for your service, Michelle, and looking forward to your leadership on the Board, Jennifer. The next, the last appointee we have is the Audit Committee. I will be rolling off of the Audit Committee, and Jessica Johnson will be rolling on as my replacement on the Audit Committee. And so, thank you so much, Jessica, for your leadership and, leadership and, as well. There's a lot of great work and a lot of tough work that happens on the Audit Committee. And so, I'm really excited to have your leadership and experience in that space as well. The last thing that we have for, on the agenda is information. So, at this time, I invite Board members to report out from their committees and on any recent activities. So, are there any report outs from conferences, board committees, or anything about my colleagues would like to share? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Erica, please.
Right before spring break, I had the opportunity to attend COSPA, which is a new organization for school board members. It is the Consortium of State School Board Associations. It's very unique because it not only serves urban school districts, it's rural and suburban that's incorporated in this organization. I did have the opportunity to attend a lot of different sessions, but the one that I really would like to highlight is Dr. Beagle. Her session was about how to serve students in poverty. And I think that's very important because she developed an approach which is called Poverty Informed Approach. And I think that's something that I'm bringing back to the district to share with everyone and how there, her, with her structure and her methodology, how you're able to educate a child regardless of their socioeconomic status and whether they're in poverty or not from a Poverty Informed Approach. So, I just wanted to highlight that. Thought that was a very great session, along with many others that were there. So, that's the only thing I have for conferences. So, I'm going to stop right there.
Yeah, thank you for attending that COSPA. It's one of the newer consortiums that has been brought together. So glad to have APS at the table. Any, anything else, any other conferences or report outs from committees? All right. Hearing none. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Erica Mitchell, seconded by Aretha Balden. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Everyone have a great night and a great week.